Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Let me welcome you to the Tuesday, September 9th, 2008, meeting of Glendale City Council. Mr. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Eusefian.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. Could we please hear the, well, I guess, let's go to the flag salute, and who is leading the flag salute?
Councilmember Quintero.
Mr. Quintero.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nice states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. This Thursday, we will be reminded that time does not dry all tears or remove every scar. Our nation will mourn the loss of those who perished on September 11th, 2001, in New York, in Washington DC, and in Pennsylvania. Death is not the greatest loss in life. The greatest loss is what dies inside us while we live, according to Norman Cousins, an American essayist and well-known writer. As painful as the loss of life has been on the day of that horrific tragedy, let us keep alive that hope, that tiny voice within all of us that dreams of peace amongst all peoples. Let's condemn the architects of murder by becoming the preachers of love and advocates of life. We pray and pledge ourselves to the task of making this world safe for not only our children but our neighbors' children. As long as this pledge to celebrate life and the flame that ignites it burns strong within us, we know that with the guidance from above and personal resolve, we shall and will persevere to see the sun rise on a better and more peaceful world tomorrow. Amen.
Okay. Mr. City Clerk, could we hear your report, please?
Agenda for the September 9th, 2008, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, September 4th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Our next item, please.
Next item is presentation and appointments, and at 3 a.m. is the agenda preview for the meetings of September 16th, 2008.
Thank you, and with that, we'll go to John Tuktalian.
Thank you, Mayor Drayman. For next week on Glendale Housing Authority Agenda, there is one item. It's a report, sorry, sorry about that. It is a report by the Director of Community Development and Housing regarding the current status of Glendale's homeless continuum of care. There are no items on the Glendale Redevelopment Agency Agenda other than the approval of minutes, and on Glendale City Council Agenda, there are a number of action items. At 8 a.m. is the Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding the proposed specific pool development project. At 8 b.m. is the Director of Information Services and the Fire Chief regarding recommendation for the purchase and implementation of a city services interface fire prevention module. At 8 c. is the Director of Public Works regarding amendments to the construction and demolition debris diversion program, and at 8 d. is the City Attorney regarding denial and findings for conditional use permit case number PCUP 2007-034 for 6410 San Fernando Road. And finally, there is one hearing. It's a proposed ordinance establishing the Royal Boulevard Historic District of Overlay Zone.
Thank you, Mr. Tuktalian. Appreciate that. Mr. City Clerk, our next item, please.
A number four, City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Najarian.
I have several, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would like to, in light of our discussion last week on the Arts and Culture Commission, with the understanding that the commission as we know it will at least be continuing until we, I guess, are a little more firm on the new character that it will take, I would like to place on the agenda the nomination of Arlette Derhovenessian to serve on that My next comment is more of a notice item, that I will be absent from the September 23rd meeting, as I will be out of the country. So please, gentlemen, don't schedule any long-distance phone calls that may disrupt or cause a quorum to be absent for that meeting. Last time I missed a meeting, we had a little issue. And if that would involve, I would like to participate in any of those, I think the smoking ordinance is up, so I don't think it would be fair for me to skip out of town and avoid making my opinions clear and my vote clear on that, so I would request, Mr. Mayor, if it suits you, to put that, perhaps bump that a week later, or any other time that's going to be.
Absolutely. I was going to talk to Mr. McFaul about that as soon as you completed your comments.
We'll make that change.
You mean, under the Brown Act, you don't want to be audio teleconferenced in?
Yeah.
I did once. No, I like, I could be here in person. And my last comment is that I was fortunate enough to attend the opening day ceremonies for our beloved AYSO Division 88 Soccer League, and there are many, many young children, boys and girls, from ages four up through 19 and 20, that are playing soccer throughout the city, a lot of parents involved in hustling them back and forth, coaches, assistant coaches, of which I am one, referees, all volunteering their time, and I wish the AYSO participants and everyone associated the very best of seasons this year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Yes, Mr. Quintero?
Only just a further note, looking at the agenda, the proposed agenda for September 23rd, that is also when we are anticipating the special meeting for the Police Advisory Board. Would you want to continue on that date on the 23rd, or have that one held?
I'll tell you, let's, let me check with Councilmember Najarian, and let's check the other schedules of council as well to see.
Thank you.
If we move it, do we lose potentially someone else? So let's, let's check that out.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Quintero?
I unfortunately had something came up unexpectedly, so I couldn't attend the AYSO, which is too bad, because I very much, and I was there last year, and it's just so enjoyable watching all the little kids all dressed up in their uniforms, and the parents in the stands cheering, and it just really gives you a good, gives you a good feeling and kind of makes you understand what Glendale's all about, but I couldn't. I planned to go, but I couldn't make it. I did get a chance to go to the Royal Canyon Homeowners Association Annual Meeting, and that was, I was actually filling in for Mayor Drayman, and that was quite a turnout, had a very good, very good crowd, so I got an opportunity to talk about some of the issues that City of Glendale's been dealing with in terms of DRB and hillside ordinance, et cetera. It was an excellent, an excellent meeting. And then finally, I also attended a MASIS, which is a newspaper that was celebrating its anniversary, and that was also a very good crowd. It's a newspaper that's been around for many, many years here in the region. That's it, Mr. Drayman.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Weaver?
Oh, I was babysitting.
You were babysitting, okay. I have a couple of announcements. One is, I want to thank my colleague, Mr. Eusefian, for holding court for me at the Glendale Beautiful Event at the Casa Adobe, same reason I couldn't make the Royal Canyon HOA meeting, was the same reason I couldn't be at the Glendale Beautiful. I'm a ailing, ailing parent, and that came up rather suddenly, and so I also want to thank Councilmember Quintero for jumping in literally at the last moment for me at the Royal Canyon event. And I'd like to send the council's and staff's regards to Sue Eller, otherwise, aka Mrs. Councilmember Eusefian, who is ailing, and so if they're looking in, I have two messages. One, Bob, don't do this to your wife and make her watch this, and B, speedy recovery. So, did I just say one and B? How about A and B, or one and two? Anyway, with that, if there are no other staff comments, then let's move on to the next item.
Next item is consent items, including those following your routine and may be acted upon by one in the motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. No cards were submitted.
Thank you. I have two items. One is 5C, and the other is 5D, as in Drayman. All right. If I have a motion, though, for the remaining?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes. Did I actually designate someone?
The bylaws of the league require that the city council designate someone.
So we need to pull G as well?
Well, actually, the motion authorizes the mayor to designate the individual, because we don't have anyone registered for the league as of yet.
All right.
So I don't know if it needs to be, if you think it needs to be pulled, you can certainly do it separately, but it just authorizes the mayor to designate.
Let's let the motion stand, and the second, and let's call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Eusefian.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. All right. How about 5C?
5C is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding design, build of two demonstration-scale chromium-6 removal demonstration facilities, Phase 3 of the chromium-6 removal research program. At C1 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Earth Tech Inc.
Thank you. Let me go to Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask that this be pulled. We've had quite a history in Glendale with the chromium-6 issue, and there has been some demonstration, test demonstration facilities conducted in the University of Colorado, and now they are coming to Glendale, and as someone who was just doing some chemistry and biology homework with my high school son, I was wondering if we might put some education into our meeting. If you could tell us briefly what the chromium-6 molecule is, and how do we remove that from our water, and just in the general sense, I mean, I don't want a tutorial, but let us know how it works and what we can expect to occur.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, we did have a three-hour presentation on the technicalities, but I assume you don't want that, right?
Please, no.
What I'd like to do, I'm kidding.
All right, thank you. But please do state your name for the record.
Glenn Steiger, General Manager, Glendale Water and Power. What I would like to do is introduce Leighton Fong, who is our technical expert in chromium-6, to answer some of your chemistry questions.
Just the brief overview of what the problem is, and what we're going to do to solve it, and is it a filtration system, an osmosis system, and, you know, an ionic charge that we're going to place on the molecule, or?
Okay. Well, the problem is chromium in the groundwater. Even though we're less than the public maximum contaminant level of 50 parts per billion, we did want to remove as much as we can, because there are, there are studies now that says it probably is going to be a health issue, and they're, they're going to issue a public health goal that we think is going to be pretty low. So we did studies way back from 2001, with a lot of pilot studies of technologies that are going to be effective in removing chromium-6. The two that appeared most effective was weak base anion and reduction coagulation filtration. So we call it WBA and RCF. You can see why. WBA is ion exchange similar to like your water softener. So the resin exchanges one ion for another. So this resin attracts chromium and releases a salt, okay? And they tested four different varieties of the resin, and they have one that's been very promising. And so that's the one we're going to test at the GS3 well on Goodwin. And then the RCF is kind of a precipitation, where you, you change the form of the ion from hexvalent to trivalent, which has a, is less soluble. And then they can precipitate it and filter it out. So that's a more involved process with many steps, but it's, it's more, it's less expensive. The resin is expensive. The trouble is, it takes a lot of manpower. So we're testing the two, and they're kind of different in the approach and the technology and the cost. So depending on the volume, the RCF may be the most economic, but for quick and easy and not, you know, it's kind of a idiot-proof technology. You just run the water in and out, and it, and the chromium is, is removed. But it is more expensive on a per gallon basis. So these are the two that we have grants to demonstrate, and then they'll be able to evaluate cost and efficiency of removal. And then from that, I think they, a lot of the data will go to the Health Department, because they, they need the data to issue and determine what would be the, the maximum contaminant level for chromium-6. That's kind of being studied right now statewide.
Mr. Quintero?
I just wanted to comment, just so the public understands, this chromium is not a naturally occurring element that happens to be in our groundwater. It's part of a giant plume that over the years, the aerospace companies primarily, over decades, polluted the groundwater right along the San Fernando Valley, all the way up San Fernando Road, literally, and as a result of that dumping, that giant plume has now gotten to Glendale. These are wells that we, so in other words, it's confined to that part of the city, not the northern part of the city or central, but rather along San Fernando Road. So these are wells that we, after the water is cleaned, it'll be blended with Colorado water, and hopefully it will be okay for the public to drink. And I do want to also add, if we, those of us that were on the council at the time, if you remember, we weren't allowed to pump that water and put it into the LA River, because it might hurt the fish. So it was okay to treat it, blend it, and give it to the, to the public, but not to dump into the LA River. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure they understand that this is something that the, they're called the industry group, and actually, the polluters, over decades, managed to screw up drinking water here in Glendale, Burbank, and other regions in the San Fernando Valley.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything else. I'll move 5C.
Second. Thank you. Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Eusefian.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Let's hear the item at 5D.
5D is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding agreement between the City of Glendale and Glendale Respondents Group LLC regarding chromium-6 facilities. At D1 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute a funding agreement with the Glendale Respondents Group LLC, and D2 is a resolution appropriating $431,122.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, unless any of you have questions or desire a report from the Director of GWP, I ask to have this matter pulled. In discussing this with staff and the Assistant Director of Finance, the resolution at 5D2 is unnecessary. It is also inappropriate form and inconsistent with our charter as well, but it's unnecessary. It's grant monies that we're receiving, and so unless you have a report, I would recommend that 5D2 not be considered, and that the matter at 5D1 be the focus of your consideration.
Is there a, any objection to deleting 5D2?
I'll pull 5D1.
Very good. We have a second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No. Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Eusefian.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be oral communication.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. As you know, ladies and gentlemen, we have moved oral communications to the end of the agendized items on our calendar this evening, with the exception of those who voluntarily limit their time to three minutes for the purpose of making announcements about public events. And I have three speaker cards. The first is Julie Shermer, followed by Jean Meyer, oh, excuse me, Leon Meyer, Mayor, pardon me, pardon me, Leon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilmen, staff, I believe already has some little pins to pass out to you. I'm here this evening to talk to you about the Torch Run for the Environment, and we're going to be having a little video clip ready to show you. I don't know if it's ready, but see if it is. Glendale is going green, and you are invited to join the efforts during the 2008 Torch Run for the Environment, September 20th, 2008, a fundraiser benefiting the Environmental Education Program of the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale. This relay begins with opening ceremonies at 8:00 a.m. at Crescent Valley Park. Mayor John Drayman will kick off the relay by running the first leg of the run, followed by other runners who will travel throughout the city of Glendale, and culminates at Cerritos Park with a fun-filled and educational eco-explo from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. You too could be a runner. The Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale is looking for volunteers and sponsors interested in protecting the environment and helping Glendale go for the green. For more information about the Torch Run for the Environment, please visit our website at www.torchrunglendale.org, or contact Julie Shermer at 818-550-4508. Pretty much says it all, doesn't it?
It does.
Anyway, we're going to go from the tip of Glendale, to the top of Glendale, to the tip of Glendale, and from Crescent Valley Park down to Cerritos, and I think it's going to be a very nice morning on Saturday, September 20th. Hope that you can, all can join us, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but we're going to have a great eco-explo afterwards, and an environmental book that'll be ready to go with the pictures of the runners, ads from the sponsors, and if you want to be a sponsor, we have till Thursday to get your name on the back of the T-shirt, and it's going to be a chance for individual companies and individuals, if they would like to participate, just give me a call. TorchRunGlendale.org.
Very good, and thank you so much, and I would like to encourage everyone to participate either as a runner, or, or to come along for the ride, so to speak, and participate in the event one way or the other. If this collection of old bones, plastic and metal can hustle it along for, what is it, a quarter of a mile?
Quarter mile downhill.
Downhill.
Don't work.
Downhill goes without saying when you're talking about the council, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shermer. Leon, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Drayman, members of council and staff. Before I get into the library, I'd like to mention that and congratulate you on the chromium-6, because about six, seven years ago, we had Erin Brockovich, the founder of Chromium Six, ex-Hosei, so to speak, at Kwanis, and she was publicized in the Glendale news press, and I'm going to call her, write her, let her know about the success of the program she started many years ago. As far as the green program that Julie Shermer just mentioned, we're having Ed Begley, the Hollywood star of all green conservation at the library. I'll tell you about that later. Now, at this time, very quickly, I'd like to tell you that I'm here on behalf of the Friends for Glendale Library, and to talk a little bit about a couple of events. September 18th, 7 o'clock, that's a Thursday, we're having two authors. First author is Judith Freeman, who's written a book called The Long Embrace, the story of Raymond Chandler and the woman he loved. Now Raymond Chandler was a famous turn-of-the-century, last century, of course, writer, screenwriter, and he originated the concept of glamorous private detective with the Philip Marlowe series, and he also was a film writer, and he wrote Double Indemnity, which was screened here in Glendale. And Judith Freeman is from USC. She's a professor with a creative writing program there at USC, and she's also well-known. And that will be Thursday, the 18th. The other author we're having is a new author. Her name is Lisa Jones Johnson. She's a Harvard Law graduate. She won the award on the movie, on the book that she did, A Dead Man Speaks. She won from the NAACP 2007 Image Award for the debut, debut of a writer, and that book is very interesting, because it talks about a man who gets murdered, but he has psychic powers, and his psychic powers are transmitted, coincidentally, to a New York detective, that's where the crime occurred, who also has psychic powers, and it's a very interesting story, and it's very alluring, and we urge you to come there September 18th in the evening. And very quickly, on the 1st of October, we're going to be lucky to have Jack London with us, not in name, but I'm not in person, but in name. The Huntington Library has a curator of manuscripts, and she's going to come to the library, because Jack London was a famous photographer, and we'll talk to you a little bit more about this next time. He's going to have a film presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim Kussman, followed by Tatev Ogunyan.
Hi, Jim Kussman, from Glendale. To tag along with the, with this last couple of arts and cultural deal we've been, we've been talking about, I'm here this evening to invite the city council, people in this chamber, and the people at home, to the Stepping Stone Players' presentation of Once Upon a Mattress. You look to me like stepping stone players. It's a group that's been in existence for nine years. It's a nonprofit made up of concerned parents up in the Hoover, Keppel, Toll area. They put on, our mission is to bring live theater to Glendale. Every summer, we put on a full-blown Broadway musical. We started with The Wizard of Oz. We've done Annie, any number of shows, and this year, we're doing Once Upon a Mattress. It's got a professional orchestra mixed in with Hoover High School students playing, conducted by Craig Koopka, who is the award-winning music director at Hoover High School. The Stepping Stone Players has a partnership agreement with Hoover High School, and Kevin Welch, we do mentoring of students, we do workshops, and the show is this Saturday, Friday and Saturday at 7:00, and Sunday at 2:00, and it also plays the following weekend, and the Sunday performance is ASL, ASL interpreted. So we invite you, we have some tickets for you. We'd love to have you come and see what, what can be done by a group of parents with various and sundry professional and amateur theater backgrounds. It's at the Hoover High School Auditorium. It's a beautiful facility to go to, whether you like the show or not. I mean, it's a, it's a historic building. It's fun to be in. The sightlines are good, the music is great, the singers are great, the costumes are professional quality. I mean, it's, it's quite something to behold. So I would like to leave you with these complimentary tickets, and I'll leave some brochures on the back table.
Good. And Mr. Kussman, tell the audience, the public again, hopefully an audience at the event, the name of the musical again.
It is The Stepping Stone Players' Presentation of Once Upon a Mattress.
And this was the New York musical that made a star of Carol Burnett?
That's exactly correct.
Right.
And I think we, we actually secured the P. that they used in the Broadway production, so, for those of you that are aware of what the story's about.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kussman.
Thank you.
Tatev Ogunyan. I pronounced your name two different ways. I hope one of them was right.
The second time was right.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tatev Ogunyan, and I'm here from the Armenian National Committee Glendale Chapter. I want to invite everyone to our garage sale we're holding this Saturday, September 13th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., at 3158 Los Bolivos Lane, Locresena, 91214, in an effort to raise money for Relay for Life. Have some flyers here. We're going to be selling various things, such as clothes, books, CDs, and furniture. We'd also like to note that the ANC Glendale has a team this year, and those who are interested in joining our team can do so by visiting our website at www.ancglendale.org, and click on upcoming events link. And if you can't. And if you can't find to be there that day, you can also donate on the same site. We'd hope to see everyone there this Saturday and on the day of the event. Please come and support us in our efforts to raise money to fight cancer.
Thank you very much. That's 3550, excuse me, 51, let me try that one more time, 3158 Los Olivos Lane in La Crescenta. Uh, and the hours are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 13th. Very good. That was our last speaker for this, uh, round of, uh, oral communications. Mr. City Clerk, the next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, at 7:00, under Adoption of Ordinances, at 7:00 a.m. is an urgency ordinance, enlending Appendix Chapter 1, Section 105.2 of Volume 1 of the Glendale Building and Safety Code 2008, relating to provisions of temporary frames or story poles, and declaring the urgency thereof. This was offered on September 2nd, 2008, by Councilmember Weaver.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Weaver.
Move 7A.
Motion in a second. Mr. Quintero.
I just wanted to comment that later on, we'll be talking about this VRB, uh, ruling. In fact, these story poles would certainly have taken some of the guesswork for the neighbors. Story poles, meaning that, uh, the neighborhood would get a clearer feel for what, uh, that proposed house would, uh, look like. But, uh, anyway. That's it.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Um, Mr. Weaver.
There's a motion in a second?
Yes, there's a motion in a second. The second was Councilmember Najarian.
Yes.
I have no speaker card, so let's call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Eusefian?
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. Next item, please.
At 8:00, under Action Items, as 8:00 a.m. City Manager, regarding public noticing procedures. At 8:01 a.m. is a motion providing direction to staff on public noticing procedures.
All right, let me go to Mr. McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, we actually had our Public Information Officer, Rich Wells, gather the information and compile the report, and Mr. Wells will provide the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, council recently asked staff to compile public noticing procedures that the city practices. I'll break it down into two categories for you. First of all, there are the legal public noticing procedures that the city has to do under, uh, local, state, and federal rules and regulations. There are also those, uh, public noticing procedures that the city practices, basically to inform and gain public input on various issues. The public noticing that the city does by law, of course, is for various issues, including conditional use permits, community development block grant funding, and, uh, other zoning matters, and just to name a few. Uh, for gaining public input, for those that are not legally required, the city, uh, can do so by, uh, doing various methods for the public noticing, including, um, sending out notices through the mail, uh, by electronic mail, uh, electronic media, and other methods. Um, the city, um, has been practicing, uh, various ways to do the public noticing for some time, and it has tried to expand on public noticing over the years. Uh, for example, the city has been sending out, uh, public notices beyond what is normally required, uh, for the radius of a, maybe a neighborhood. Uh, the city recently has been expanding to, uh, to include, as I mentioned, the electronic media and, uh, other forms. The, uh, legal noticing, uh, that, um, uh, the city, uh, has been, uh, involved in for some time, uh, has been, uh, along the, the, um, along the, uh, means of, um, bless my place, I'm sorry about that. The city has been, uh, trying to, uh, expand its, uh, public noticing procedures, uh, and has done so, um, by reaching out to the community through these various means that I have mentioned. Uh, most recently, the city has tried to expand, uh, some of these procedures. Uh, for example, the city clerk is going to be, uh, putting election public notices on the city website in the future, and also, uh, will be doing this in addition to local newspaper ads. Uh, Glendale Water and Power currently is looking, uh, at, um, uh, expanding by utilizing a mass communication phone system. Uh, this phone system would be, um, uh, something that the city could utilize for, uh, trying to contact the residents in a particular neighborhood, or even more on a mass scale. The city, uh, would, um, possibly want to consider doing something in the way of a formal policy for public noticing. Uh, this could be, um, in the way of utilizing all the different methods that the city currently uses, uh, including, uh, using email, Channel 6, um, and, uh, the city website. Um, that is just a brief summary. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, staff tonight is seeking your direction on ways that it could possibly improve and enhance our public noticing, uh, procedures.
Okay. Mr. Wells, um, uh, let me see whether I have any comments for my colleagues, but I would be interested myself in, um, in a, creating a more, or discussion of a more, how do you put it, more formal policy. Um, we hear over and over and over and over about problems with, um, our notice, noticing process. I know Councilmember Eusefian has questioned it in the past, uh, setback issues, uh, today, during last night, I was receiving emails, as I'm sure my colleagues did too, about a, about a, um, disabled, uh, access ramp that was being put in, and one of the complaints was that the, the affected, uh, house found out about it because they had workmen in their yard. Um, I know to some degree, we're all aware that people, to some degree, get notices and maybe don't, don't notice them, or don't, you know, toss them aside, or what have you, but I, I can't believe that all of the volume of questions and complaints that we've had just since I've been here is attributable just to, uh, the homeowner or the resident mislaying the notice. Um, and in the case of Councilmember Eusefian's own home, it was an issue of, uh, the name of a previous homeowner from years and years before, and, uh, which seemed to explain why they didn't receive it. Um, so, uh, I will withhold further comment, but, uh, as one council member, I would, uh, I would certainly like to hear more about a, uh, discussion where we could create a formal policy. Mr. Quintero.
I agree. And specifically, what's most important to residents is those issues immediately surrounding either their house or their neighborhood. So that obviously comes through the planning department, sometimes through Public Works. But I do think we have to sharpen, refine, get creative, whatever words you wanna use to try to get information out to people when it particularly affects their properties.
You have any other? Mr. Weaver.
Well, just say, that's fine, but all my years here, every single year, I hear about people, and we say we sent notices to, one form or another, and they didn't get it. They didn't know. I doubt that's ever gonna change. Um, in the case of where the city is doing work on city property, I don't know if it's necessary to tell the public. I mean, I'm open discussing it, but the emails that we got in relation to that house up near where Sir Eusefian and I live, the work was all gonna be done on city property. The owner just didn't know it was city property. So, you know, I, do we have a requirement to tell the public when it's gonna be on city property where we're doing the work? I'm just leaving it open. You want a formal policy, that's fine, but it won't solve all the problems. We'll still get the complaints.
Do you have anything cheery to add, Councilmember Najarian, on this topic?
Just to, just to be, um, I guess to break it down a bit, I think we're dealing with two different types of sub-issues. Number one is to make sure that we're actually, uh, getting notice to those folks who are within the notice area, and by law, need to receive notice. Perhaps in another media, rather than just your typical, something in the mail, you're talking about a phone list, or maybe an email list, or a reverse, uh, what do they call it, reverse phone book, or, uh, reverse directory, uh, perhaps something where they acknowledge, uh, receipt of notice. And the other question is, do we want to expand that notice, uh, on these myriad of different types of, uh, hearings and, uh, projects that, that go on within any particular neighborhood? Um, I'm happy to, uh, to discuss it. I think I like the idea of a, uh, a reverse directory. I think those are very effective. Uh, the school district does them, uh, and they're, you know, they send out notices at the last minute on school changes, or cancellations, or special events, and they seem to, uh, you know, I seem to get them quite often. Seems to be a rather low-cost, perhaps a comprehensive manner to, uh, to send notice out. And that's, I guess, assuming that the, uh, the information on the phones are, are correct. Uh, but I have no objection to looking into, uh, both of those, you know, um, increasing the, the actual notice received, increasing the probability of the residents actually receiving notice, as well as looking at whether we want to increase, uh, the circumference or the radius of the, uh, the homes that should receive notice.
Well, we have, uh, expanded policies in, in the past. Um, see, and this is where, you know, um, I, I understand, Mr. Weaver, I think we all do, that this was in the, in the setback area, that this work in this particular house. However, to me, that's not the point. If I'm a property owner in this city, and suddenly I find out, because the workmen arrive, that they're going to cut a 15-foot-wide swath through my front yard and take out a mature magnolia tree that shades my house, which could seriously devalue my property, potentially, um, that leads a, uh, a, a disabled access to nowhere, because there's no sidewalk involved, uh, I'd have a few complaints, even if it is technically legal. And I think that that is part of why we need to address this issue. The other issue is, uh, uh, we had a policy of notifying, uh, people about projects, where signs had to be posted of a certain size, and we found out with an issue, uh, with the, dare I say the words, the Bob Smith Toyota issue, where the, the notice of posting, uh, the posting of the notice was put on the door of the, of the parts, or service department. So you actually physically had to go into the dealership and into the parts department, or service department, to find that notice on the door. It may have satisfied it technically, but it, it just doesn't make any sense. And so that's why, um, that's why I think we need to, A, look at, look at the available options, uh, because of whatever technology has become available, or other, other, uh, informational tools we have, but also because times have changed, and the way people move about the community has changed, and to the extent that we can look at that, we should. Um, do I assume, then, that we, there is an agreement to place this on the agenda?
Sure. So with that direction, what we'll do is that we will, we're very aware of other alternatives of where we could continue to expand, uh, expand this, and we'll bring them back to council if this sounds like the right thing to do. We'll compile all of these, the circumstances where, where we would suggest using the, uh, other means of communication, and ensure things like the, the Toyota dealer, those things shouldn't happen. It's not, definitely is not the intent of our public noticing to not, to not have it in a place where the public can see it, but it does seem to happen. So we need to make sure that our practices follow what the intent is, so we can bring that all back into form of report with the different options and, and count, and take further direction from there.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Weaver?
As the mayor said, technically, it might be right, but like we've done in the past, but maybe we have to go the extra mile now. And even where city work is going on, on city property, that we have to notify the adjacent homeowners.
But he, I don't think, actually, you'd get any disagreement, any level, that when pro, when work is taking place, like in the instance that you brought up, it is the right thing to notify the property owner. And, and we have lots of examples where we've done that. For some reason, something fell through the cracks on this one, because it is, it is only the right thing to do, and somebody's property is gonna be disruptive, whether it's a legal requirement or not, it's simply the right thing to do.
Like, a surveyor goes out, I get a call, what's a surveyor doing out next to my property? So, I don't know how you handle that, but you wonder.
It also ensures that they get all the proper information about what is actually happening on, on a project, what is happening and what's not gonna happen. So we'll, we appreciate the direction, we'll put this back together and report, and bring it back shortly to council.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Okay, I have no, oh, yes, I do, I'm sorry, Juan, Mike Mohill?
Good evening, Mayor Drayman and Councilmen. Um, you brought up a very interesting subject matter called notification for people of building construction going on.
Stick your name for the record.
Oh, Mike Mohill, sorry. Um, I drive down Chevy Chase Avenue every day. Now, I live on top of Glen Oaks Boulevard, and I pass two big edifices. One is the Retirement Home, that's about a five-story building, that has about a five-foot setback. And then there is the Venice Hospital, that has a one-foot setback from the corner of Chevy Chase, St. Sinclair. I never got notification of any of those two buildings. And I live, grant you, I live approximately two miles from those two large buildings, but that's in my neighborhood. It's not a small little house, it's not one little tree. But I have to see that, that air and judgment by the city, as far as I'm concerned, the developer, and everybody else. 'Cause that's an eyesore. You can't help but say, wow! And now they gone ahead, and because they've changed, made these variances, we now have a new set of rules. I mean, why have zoning if you change it? All the other buildings on Chevy Chase in that area, I think they're like, they're low-rising, uh, commercial, they're like five, seven, 10 feet setback, but, but you got a five-story building that only has a, a five-foot setback, and it stands right at your face. Again, why wasn't the neighbors given notification? Now, I was told that the Retirement Home, the, uh, the builder initially wanted to put a, a, another floor or two onto his building. Well, how high is the zoning in Chevy Chase in that area? Do we want to have 10-story buildings in a semi-residential area? We have zoning, and yet we, we have variances, and it's, it, there's a purpose for zoning, to make rules and regulations that we all live by, and then we go ahead and change it. Just like, shh! Then everybody else in the neighborhood gets to see it. So I wish for somehow, there would be more notification for the residents. Uh, newspaper's good, but you know, I, the funny thing about it, even you give notification, the sign is not much bigger than my piece of paper here. When you're driving 25 miles an hour down Chevy Chase, okay, Avenue, Boulevard, you never see it. And if you do see it, they put it in, in the corner, so none of the residents can see it, so they can pull a fast one, as far as I'm concerned. If it happens in my neighborhood, I'm sure it'll happen other places, too. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. All right, that was the last speaker card. Mr. Weaver?
Move 8A1, with, I guess, the direction that we've already given to staff.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? There is not, Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Eusefian?
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. All right, the next item, please.
AP is Director of Public Works, regarding Agreement for Design, Construction, Operations, and Maintenance of a Compressed Natural Gas, CNG, fueling facility. At B1 is a resolution adopting a certain negative declaration prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for the CNG fueling facility. At B2 is a motion authorizing City Manager to execute an agreement with Clean Energy, CE, for a compressed natural gas, CNG, fueling facility located at 1713 and 1761 Gardena Avenue, Glendale, for a 10-year period with two five-year extension options. And at B3 is a resolution appropriating $211,100.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. Uh, Mr. Quintero?
I am very, very, very happy that we're moving forward with this, uh, project, and I think it's the perfect location, Mr. Bagdani, and, um, it is a good deal financially for the city, but more important, not only will our buses and, and garbage trucks and other vehicle, street sweepers be able to fill up, so will the public. So we'll have a CNG, uh, gas station effectively there at the transportation, uh, center, and, uh, so I think this is great. It's gonna come in very quickly, so it should be operational real soon. And I think this is an excellent company to, uh, work with, actually, Clean Energy. So, prepared to make the motion.
All right, I do have, I do have two speaker cards as well. Let me see if there are any other comments.
I'm ready.
Chair, just for the viewing public that isn't a Just for the viewing public that isn't aware, CNG is compressed.
Compressed natural gas.
Yes. And so we'll also make T. Boone Pickens happy, too, apparently, so. All right, let's go to the public. Nancy Kent, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. Yes, it's overdue to have this facility in Glendale, and this does seem like an appropriate place for it. I have one question. The staff report says the city will have an agreement with Clean Energy, the name of the company that will build and maintain this station, for a 10-year period with two five-year extension options. Can this agreement be further extended after 20 years? It does not make sense to limit it to 20 years if the Clean Energy company is doing a good job, assuming that this technology is still being used 20 years from now, which it well may be. And my last point is, whenever the city is about to build something, I always ask that it be a lead building. I think, however, that this is not a building, it's just fuel pumps with a canopy over them. But I'm wondering if there's any chance of getting solar cells on top of that canopy either now or in the future. And if the compressor site is a building, I will ask that that be a lead building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Margaret Hammond.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm the council and staff and the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I think that the city is being very fiscally responsible by having this fueling at this, in our own area. I mean, not just the saving that I read in the paper today, or in the paper, you know, will cost like $66,000 or whatever versus $1 point million if we did our own, built it ourselves and also some $60,000 a year to maintain it. This way, we're not only saving all that money coming out of our immediate cash funds, but also our buses and trucks and vans that use it. What a tremendous saving there will be in the traveling to Burbank and back to fuel those particular vehicles. I think it's absolutely a fabulous idea and the fact that they are willing to do it and give us a break on the, also, on the cost of the fueling of our vehicles. I think we just couldn't lose on it. So I'm very happy that the city is really taking into mind, to mind our money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Scott Lowe.
Thank you for hearing me. Sorry for the last-minute edition, I've never done this before, but I just wanted to say that I think it's a great idea to build it in Glendale.
Could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, my name is Scott Lowe, because I drive a compressed natural gas car. And currently, I have to drive eight miles each way to Burbank to fill up because that's the closest station. And usually, I'm competing with the Glendale Beeline buses that are also there. So I'll quite appreciate, well, I guess they'll still be filling up at this close station, but presumably, they can fill up a little bit earlier in the day. And I feel so bad for the drivers that have to drive eight miles each way every single night. So I think it's a great idea and I look forward to being there on opening day to fill up.
What kind of vehicle do you drive?
It's a Honda Civic GX. And also Colonial Honda recently began selling them as well, so they didn't used to.
Very good.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
We did have a fueling station at the 134 in San Fernando Road, but with the overpass, that station was.
Passed over.
Passed over, yeah.
Decommissioned.
Anyway, we're all, we're all listening to T. Boone Pickens. We're on our way. I'd like to move 8B1.
Two and three.
Can we move on?
Yes.
8B1, two and three.
We have a motion and a second. We also have a question.
I have a question that just came up. CNG is catching on in popularity, no doubt, or there is another fuel, which is hydrogen fuel, which will fuel hydrogen fuel cells, creating electricity, which is, I think, ultimately more environmentally friendly. Do we in any way limit clean energy from dispensing only CNG at this facility if hydrogen, and Honda does have some hydrogen and GM have some hydrogen prototype, hydrogen fuel cell prototypes? If that starts to catch on, is it just a matter of them deciding to install the hydrogen fueling tanks and hoses and attendants? Or is this something that has to come back for another RFP and et cetera?
Mr. Stern.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, Clean Energy, as it turns out, operates a hydrogen facility already and is very, we've, staff has already begun discussions with them about the future potential for that. We'd have to discuss a little bit with the city attorney, but our feeling was that we could use this as a, maybe an addendum to the current agreement to then move into hydrogen fuel at the time that we think it's right to do that. But certainly, this vendor is experienced with that and willing to work with us as we progress towards that particular alternative fuel.
I saw their presentation at the Independent Cities Association meeting, so I think they're indicating that they do hope that the hydrogen fuel cell technology catches on. So I just want to make sure that we'll be ready to adapt this facility with them to meet the need.
That door is definitely open and for us to go through.
Thank you.
So one day, we can look forward to Glendale being the city that's known for being full of hot air and gas. If it isn't already known.
Explosive gas.
All right, Councilmember Quintero.
I wanted to make sure that Mr. Najarian also knew that the BMW 7 Series is an option for hydrogen for future automotive needs.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other, is there any other comment? No. Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian. Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Before we move on to the next item, there's one card that got deleted from the public announcements, and that is Lois Jones.
Thank you. I guess I didn't quite know the process here, so now I do.
Okay. While we're on process, state your name for the record, please.
It's Lois Jones, and I'm here to represent Temple Sinai of Glendale. On Sunday, September 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock, we will be sponsoring an interfaith community forum on genocide in Darfur, which will be moderated by U.S. Representative Adam Schiff. We will have three very important speakers. Father Vascon Movcisin from In His Shoes International, speaking on the Armenian genocide. Robert Gominder, a Holocaust survivor from Poland. And Mohammed Suliman, a refugee from Darfur, Sudan. There will be a question and answer period, followed by a dessert reception. And Temple Sinai of Glendale is located at 1212 North Pacific Avenue in Glendale. It's a half-block north of Stalker. We have a website, temple-sini.net. And for more information, you can also call 818-246-8101. And I do have just a handful of flyers here. So we'd love to see you and the greater community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Kasakian.
Nine is hearings, and nine is Director of Planning regarding appeal of Design Review Board Case Number 2, PDR 2008-008, located at 3761 Santa Carlota Street. At 9A1 is motion sustaining the Alternative Assessment Panel's decision to approve the Design Review Board application. And 9A2 is a motion to overturn or reverse Alternative Assessment Panel's decision to approve the Design Review Board application.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Let me, we go to Mr. Hagani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jalek Yazand, who is the case planner for this particular case, has prepared a slide presentation due to the very visual nature of this case, and they're all slides. She's going to present them. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. The decision before you is to either uphold the approval of the project located at 3761 Santa Carlota Street or to reverse and overturn it. I'm going to go over the project briefly. It is an existing single-story, single-family residence on a corner lot located at the corner of Boston Avenue and Santa Carlota Street. The proposal is for the addition of an attached garage, first-floor story and the new second-floor story. And the second-floor story is the most controversial part of the project. To help me explain the project better, I've got a few slides, which I'm going to go over. The slide before you shows the location of the subject property. As you can see, it's at the junction of Santa Carlota and Boston Avenue. The next slide is the aerial photo with project proposals showing the location of the second story in relation to the neighboring house on the north, which also include the Appalant property, which is here. At no point is this second story closer to any of the northern neighbor, neighboring properties than 50 feet. And it is, it is location above the first-floor addition. The next slide is the existing and demolition site plan. It shows the existing detached garage, which will be demolished, and the extent of the first floor, which also will be demolished. The next slide is the proposed site plan. Again, it shows the location, the proposed attached garage, which will be attached to the existing house through the proposed first-floor addition, above which the bulk of the second story will be located. This is the proposed first-floor plan. The proposed second-floor plan, which incidentally shows that there are only bathrooms and bedrooms on this floor. The next slide is an aerial photo of the proposed, actually, the subject house and upslope from it is the Appalant property. This next slide is looking at the existing house from Boston Avenue. And the next slide is looking at the same subject property from Santa Carlota Avenue Street, I'm sorry. Design Review Board and Alternative Assessment Panel have both reviewed the project and have approved this project. The next slide is looking from the corner of the subject property towards the northern properties. The Appalant property will be here behind this tree. The next slide is a view from the same corner, looking towards the proposed house. This is like.
The proposed house? I'm sorry.
It is, it is. This is the rendering of the proposed house, showing the second story and the way the house is going to look. The next slide, which was submitted by the Appalant, shows, it is a view from the edge of their property or yard, looking over towards the subject property. This next slide, also submitted by the Appalant, shows the view towards the subject property from the Appalant house. The Appalant.
Question.
I'm sorry.
A different time of the year, they look like deciduous trees.
That is correct. When I went there, at this time of the year, it's all covered with vegetation. I'm not sure what season it is, but I guess it's a different season.
The other showed a lot of tree and this one shows.
Exactly, yes. That is the way it is currently, yes. The Appalant has cited two sections of the site in relation to their appeal. One of them is section 30.47.020F5, which addresses the exemption from design review procedure and requirement. Since the project has been already reviewed by the board, this element of this section has been satisfied. The next section is 30.47.010BNG, which addresses beauty, livability, prosperity, design and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. The Appalant has also submitted a copy of a private covenant, which seems to prohibit second stories. According to the city attorney, the city has no part in this covenant and it has no bearing on this appeal. The following are some of the points, points which were discussed by the board while reviewing the project. Considering the limitations and restrictions of the site and the requirement of the zoning code, such as the slope of the site, corner lot location, landscape requirement, setback requirement, the addition could not have maintained a one-story building. Their building footprint remains mainly unchanged, and the second story is modest in scale and is designed to integrate well with the existing house. Location and modest scale of the second story minimizes its impact on its neighboring house and the streetscape. Based on these recommends and the June 26th, 2008 record of the decision, the board has found that this criteria has been satisfied. Staff has recommended approval to both Alternative Assessment Panel and Design Review Board. And consistent with that recommendation, staff recommend that the city council approves the project. The draft motion of approval is attached, and should the board decide to reverse or overturn the approval, an alternative draft motion is also attached. If there is any question, oh, actually, I have more slides that I think will help the case further. The next slide is actually a section through the site showing the proposed house in relation to the northern property, which is this one, this first section. The next section is a section through the site showing the proposed house in relation to the Appalant property. The last slide is one of the four elevations, which was submitted by the applicant. Council has got the other elevation in their packages. I've chosen this one because this is the one which overlooks the northern property. And as you can see, the second-story windows, which happen to be to the bathrooms on this floor, are the only windows overlooking the northern neighborly. And the board has conditioned the sill height of this to be raised to mitigate any privacy concern. This is the last slide, and this concludes my presentation. If there is any question, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, let me, before we go to the public and open the public hearing, let me see if there are any comments from.
I just had a couple technical questions.
Councilmember Najarian.
Was there any requirement that the bathroom windows be opaque?
To answer that question, Councilmember Najarian, because it's raised, the sill height is raised by five feet from the finished floor level, I guess this is left to the applicant because it's not easy to overlook. It's been raised to such a high level that.
So does that picture, portray the higher sill level that was suggested?
No, this is the previous one. The applicant will comply with this requirement and will raise the sill. But this is the elevation which was submitted to both boards.
What is the, what is the actual distance between the north side of that structure and the south side of the Raizo Way?
I think I've got.
31 feet.
I have got a slide which explains. This slide shows the existing, I mean, the proposed second story, and these are the windows which overlook both the Appalant project and other neighboring property. And as I mentioned before, there is a minimum 50 feet from each of these houses to the second story. None of them are closer than 50 feet to the second story. None of them are closer than fifty feet to the second story.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for you. Amongst the slides and the images you have, most of them are similar or the same as those that were in our packet in the report. What I was looking for, and maybe it's here and I missed it, is there a view from the property in the rear looking toward the Verdugos across the subject property that shows, that's the one I've seen, but is there one similar to that that shows what the addition would look like from the previous slides' perspective? From that perspective?
From that perspective? I believe-
I did not see one.
I don't have it because that would mean that the, because this is the picture which was submitted by the Appellant and I wouldn't want to touch it. But the applicant can help you with that. I believe about a few feet of the top of the second story might be seen, but I'm not sure if this is exactly from this view because if you look at the location of the Appellant house in relation to this, and this is the attached garage, and the view will be looking that way, up slope, and there are trees and shrubs currently. But this is the view from, looking from the corner of the subject house towards the Appellant-
Right, there was a, there was an image included that included essentially this kind of a view with sort of a roughed-out outline of what the addition would look like. You can try to imagine by looking through the scribblings toward the house to the rear, but not from the house to the rear looking toward the Verdugos. That's the question I have.
That image, Mr. Mayor, was not submitted by staff. That is a, I believe that may have been submitted by the Appellant. We don't know whether or not that's to scale.
Okay, well-
The one that was in your packet, that was not submitted by staff.
All right, it was, I understand, but the simple answer is no, we don't have an image.
We do not have it, no.
Okay, maybe, maybe someone coming to the, to speak on one side or the other will provide something like that. Anyway, okay, thank you. Councilmember Quintero.
I have a question for the planning director. With the new revised ordinance, DRB ordinance, would this house have required story polls so the neighbors could get a feel for it?
I can answer that question, sorry. I apologize. There were discussions by the board regarding requesting a story poll, but they left it up to applicant to decide because when this project was submitted, which was February twelve, the requirement, the ordinance wasn't approved.
Yeah, no, I know that, but my question- Right, I'm aware of that. My question is, under the new guidelines, would story polls have been required?
Yes, they would have.
Under the new guidelines.
Under the new guidelines.
Okay. If there are no other questions from council at this point, we thank you and we'll open the public hearing and let us hear from the, from the Appellant. And just out of curiosity again, Mr. City Attorney, what is customary in terms of the length of time?
It's enough time to allow the Appellant to present a cogent case. It could be ten minutes, it could be five, it could be ten.
Let's start with that and see where we are. Let me call the Appellant forward, Helen Crutchfield Foster. Okay, that's the second card. So may I ask then, is Helen Foster not going to speak?
I would say yes.
Okay, all right, so then I will go to Robert Foster. If he would come forward and if you would take your time, we'll give you ten minutes to present your- Okay. ...point of view and if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Robert Foster. I live at three-seven-five-two Paraiso Way. I don't think it should take too long, we'll get to the points quickly, I hope. My wife and I, as do many of our neighbors, strongly object to the proposed addition in its current form. The question is, is the project compatible with surrounding homes in the neighborhoods? And I looked up on the city website to see what really the definition of a neighborhood is. And the definition of a neighborhood, as the city describes it, is a three-hundred-foot radius surrounding the proposed project. It also states that special attention should be placed on ensuring a positive relationship with adjacent developments and developments on the block on which the proposed project is located. With this special attention in mind, we would then focus most of our attention to the north side of Santa Carlotta from Boston to Lauderdale where the proposed project sits. In addition, we would also be concerned with the homes behind the project on Paraiso Way, which one of them my wife and I obviously own. In past hearings, it has been mistakenly claimed that the project sits at the lowest point of Boston and Santa Carlotta. In fact, the project home sits on the highest point of Santa Carlotta between Boston and Lauderdale, which as the city's own code states, should have special attention paid in regards to compatibility. The lot of the home directly to the east of the project at three-seven-five-seven Santa Carlotta sits at least six or more feet lower than the project's home's lot. And as shown in photos, I don't know if there's a photo up there, but I can pass one out afterwards, you can see, sits much higher than the neighboring property. So currently, right now, the project home sits, it almost appears to be a two-story project in comparison to the home to the east. If we were to almost double the height, which proposed height of twenty-five feet would bring it up to, it would really tower over that next house. And I mean, it would look like a three-story. So that's why I say it is not compatible. The project would also have a negative impact on the houses in the rear of the project, especially on Paraiso. One of the design features of these homes, including ours, are walls of glass windows. And you saw that, one of those photos, the ones, one of those taken in the winter time you were asking about, that's our house. So we have walls, glass windows, and since all the lots are tiered, basically all the homes have a high level of privacy. And the second story would basically take away all that privacy. You know, we'd be having bathroom windows facing ours, we'd be looking at their bathroom windows. And it's just, I don't see how it is a positive, it would be, I don't see how it would be positive on the surrounding homes, it would just be a negative. This is, this I think is an important point. Surrounding homes are modest in size. At twenty-seven-hundred square feet, the proposed project does not appear large on paper, but would compare to the surrounding homes within three-hundred feet, which average fifteen-hundred square feet, it would dramatically, it would be dramatically larger and negatively stand out on the streets. The average floor area ratio within three-hundred feet is point-two-two. With proposed floor area ratio of point-three-nine, this home would nearly double the neighboring homes. It's not compatible. At a proposed twenty-five-foot height, the project would be almost double the average height of surrounding homes. And I just want to point out that on this block on Santa Carlotta from Boston to Lauderdale, these are all one-story homes that are approximately thirteen feet in height because the same builder did all of these homes. So you have one home that would be twice the height of all the rest. And especially at a corner lot, I mean, it would just, it would stand out negatively. And then in regards to the fact that these were all done by the same builder, I'd like to add that this home and surrounding homes, including ours, are subject to a deed restriction that states no home shall exceed one story in height. Now, I've spoken to several, you know, with city representatives, and I understand the city does not enforce these deed restrictions. Therefore, in addition to our appeal, we have been forced to take legal action ourselves to ensure that this restriction is enforced. Back to this project violates a CCNR, I would hope convince all that this project is not compatible and does not belong in our neighborhood. In previous design review hearings, we've encouraged the applicant to pursue a single-story addition that would suit their needs and not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. And we still encourage the applicant to pursue a single-story addition. In conclusion, I'd like to thank the city council and request that you deny the project in its current form. I'd also like to say a couple things. You know, I've gone down there and I've knocked on the door and tried to speak to him and, you know, with, they're not around or they don't answer the door. My wife ran into the applicant in the street one day and he invited him and his wife up to our house to say, hey, you know what, there's some issues, we'd like to talk to you about them. And, you know, his attitude was, it's not, it's not going to have a negative impact on you. And they've never taken a step on our offer to come up and see for themselves. So, you know, we've made that attempt and I think we've done our due diligence in trying to be neighborly. So I'm sorry it's come to this, but, you know, this is where we're at at this point. And then one of those photos up there you saw was the backyard view of our neighbors. It's Kim family, they're not here tonight. But basically, their fence line and the current roof line of the applicant's home sits just, I mean, just above the fence line. And you go back through the photos, you'll see it. That would create just a wall behind their home. So it's not, it's not just my home that's going to be affected, it's going to be several of the neighbors. So that's it. Any questions for me?
I have one, but not at the moment. I would like to see that image again at the end of the, at the end of the input. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, our next speaker is Helen Crutchfield Foster. I'm sorry.
Do you have a time limit on these speakers, Mr. Mayor?
We will, in two seconds. I was just about to ask the-
All right, jump the gun.
That's okay, the city clerk.
Last speaker was seven minutes.
Right, we gave him ten, he was the other one.
So defer the remainder to second speaker or start from ten?
No, no, three, please. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Helen Crutchfield Foster and I live with my husband, Robert, at thirty-seven-fifty-two Paraiso. I'm in, you know, I've lived in Glendale for the last eight years and we bought our starter home down in Chevy Chase kind of flats area. And when we were selling that home, we were, we looked in two neighborhoods. We looked on Chevy Chase Canyon where we had ultimate privacy and no neighbors. And we also looked in this area of Glendale where we live now, where all the homes had this wonderful amount of privacy because of the tiered lots. And what kind of turned us off from the Chevy Chase Canyon area, which is lovely, is that we had no neighbors and we wanted neighbors. I mean, I have a young daughter, she goes to Rosemont Middle School, she plays in ASO eighty-eight, she's a Girl Scout. We're very kind of embedded in the community. And so it was very important to us in this purchase of our home, which we bought just last year, that in our special lot and tract of homes, nobody's looking in anybody's windows. All the houses have privacy and it's a very special and unique characteristic of this tract of homes. And you saw the window from my, the picture from my living room in the winter where all the trees are barren. On the other side of that wall of glass window is my dining room and my kitchen. So my concern is, when I'm having my Thanksgiving meal, I'm going to be able to look into this, this family's bathroom. And it's our living area that's at the rear of our home. It's not a bedroom with a small window with curtains that I can close. I mean, I have, I have probably twenty feet of glass and I'm going to see this addition and these windows going into bathrooms every single day. It's not something that I can close up, I can hide, and it's just not my home. It's my home, it's the Kim's home and an even more devastating of an effect it will have on the privacy of the Kims. And they're not here tonight because they don't speak English and the whole translation thing's been really difficult with them. But I also want to point out that, I'm not going to go for my notes because you guys have heard about all the FAR ratio and I think it's kind of moot. I'd like to point out that the house that's directly east to the subject property, their windows are at the top of their roof line, kind of the mid-century modern kind of top window lights that they have. And the project home sits five feet higher than the property to the east. And if you put another thirteen feet on top of that, it's going to obliterate all the light that's going to go into that, into their neighbor's home. I mean, they're going to have no westerly light at all in the afternoon, period. So we've, we've come before design review, we've said come, it's kind of a special little community of mid-century modern homes. And I just, I feel like I've come to design review boards and there's a bunch of architects that work in Glendale that sit on the review boards. And I kind of feel as a taxpayer who never thought they'd be in this situation, that it's kind of a conflict of interest to have working Glendale architects sitting on design review board. And I've also had city council, I mean, members of the planning staff knocking on neighbors' doors and telling them that they're mistaken about the project and it won't have a negative impact on the surrounding homes. So I wish my experience up until this point was a little bit better. I-
Foster, I have to ask you to conclude.
Okay, I'm concluding now. So I'm just going to ask, I would love to remain at a single-story addition to allow the Capores some additional room for their expanding family, but to not have, not devalue the properties on the all three properties surrounding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Ettinger followed by Beverly Ettinger.
Good evening. My name's Tom Ettinger and I live at thirty-seven-fifty-nine Paraiso Way, and that is two houses north of the subject property. I'm here to support the Fosters' appeal. I basically agree with everything they've, they've said. One thing that's concerned me is that there's, there's little guidance from the city in how to deal with obstruction of distant views. And in absence of that guidance, you know, common sense has to rule a little bit here. And the fact that three other properties are going to lose their value because their views are going to be taken away and especially Robert and Helen's property, which they're looking directly at the Verdugo Hills there or mountains. I think no matter how good that project looks on paper, if it values three other properties, then it's not a good project. And, and I'm against the project as it's now designed. You hear also people trying to describe the effect that this project's going to have on the other three properties, but you can't see it. The architect hasn't shown you what, and produced good drawings, good plans and elevations of the surrounding houses. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ettinger. Beverly Ettinger followed by Sandra Shields.
Beverly Ettinger, I live at three-seven-five-nine Paraiso Way and, and I live north of the Fosters. I'm on the other side of the street, the north side. I'm not going to be repetitious. I was just listening to my husband talk and it's funny because he and I really didn't talk about this recently and I could say exactly the same thing he said, but I won't. I will say this, I think if so many people object to this second story, something's really wrong. Someone on the design review board pointed that out at the last meeting in June and they said, you know, hey, so people object to this, what's wrong with it? And, and I hope that we've made it really clear how we feel about it as neighbors. I, I think we're really civilized people, we've tried to behave that way, we've tried to voice our objections, you know, clearly. Mr. Weaver had a very important observation about the foliage. That's really true, that those, those trees have no leaves in the winter. It's a long season there and you can, you see right out to the distant view of the mountains. I know that our neighbors don't want to be looking at a big box right in their backyard and out their view. And that's very important to them. The Kims who live just to the north and to the east, Mrs. Kim doesn't speak English yet. I meet her on the street all the time and she's, she's just overwhelmed with this. She's very upset about it. She doesn't really quite know how to fight it. So I speak for her. I want to speak for her and her family too. I just want to, I would like to see the council overturn that approval of the second story. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ettinger. Laura Friedman followed by Ganesh Manure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Laura Friedman and I'm here representing the design review board and I'm mostly here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, we're just- I'm sorry. Ms. Friedman, we were trying to sort out a mystery with cards and someone who is looking at us as though they thought they were next, but I only have so many cards here, so.
You want me to sit down and come back again later?
No, no, let's have- No, no, let's have you restate your comment and we'll-
My comment was just that I'm here just to answer any questions you might have about any of the board's decisions.
We don't take questions in the middle of the, in the middle of the hearing, we wait till the end, so don't go.
Okay.
There may be.
I'll sit right back down.
Okay.
Thanks.
Alright. Okay, the next speaker is, uh, Ganesh Manur.
Mr. Mayor, if I can remind anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, cards are available to fill out, uh, in the back of the room on the table by the entrance to the council chambers, so they can be placed in the queue to come up and express their opinions.
Mayor, uh, city council members, uh, good evening to you all. My name is Ganesh Manur. Um, I'm here with regards to the model of, remodel of my family residence, three-seven-six-one at Santa Carla Lotte in Lauderdale Center. Um, I'll just speak, uh, some of the points that, uh, I, I feel why we went with this project and I, I will definitely address some of the concerns that were brought up. And later I would like, uh, Vicky Barbieri, uh, who is our architect, uh, to, uh, to present some of the concerns that you, uh, you people had with the elevations. We have some new, uh, uh, the survey documents was put in a computer to get the elevations from different angles, uh, to, to clarify some of the confusions, uh, that was just discussed. My wife, who is six months pregnant, uh, couldn't come today due to health reasons, uh, but she's conveyed a sincere thanks to hearing, uh, our request here. Um, I'm an information technology professional, resident of Glendale for ten years, um, you know, I, my wife and, uh, we got married eight years ago and we've been living in the Santa Carla Lotte, three-seven-six-one, uh, property for last six years. Um, we bought this as a young couple, um, very, uh, we were very excited, uh, and, um, we, we purchased this looking at the neighborhood, we knew it's a beautiful neighborhood, a nice street. We lived in Glendale even before that, we were in an apartment, uh, so we were very excited with the house. Uh, my wife, uh, also is, uh, received Dean's Honor at Glendale Community College, she's taught at Glendale Unified School District. Uh, we're very, we're very excited that our son, we are also excited that our son, uh, who is four-year-old, will be starting kindergarten next year, uh, in that area. So, we planned, we like the neighborhood, we want it to be here, that is why we, we looked at different options. And we also have, um, relatives, I'm from India, I came here ten years ago, um, and, uh, we have some relatives, uh, who come by, this is a twenty-four hour journey and, uh, it's, it's, the visits are not just weekend or one-day visit, uh, it prolongs and we have a fourteen-hundred square foot house now. So, we'll care different options. What we can do, um, we discussed various different things and last meet, uh, one of the, uh, uh, things that were addressed in, uh, design review was that whether the options were considered. We, we did consider a lot of options. Um, you know, we, we, uh, talked to maybe at least twenty-five to thirty architects and, uh, before, before we finalized on Vicky Barbieri. Uh, why, why Vicky Barbieri stood out from rest was simple. Uh, we, we had already seen her sophisticated and impeccable, impeccable work. In, uh, but in addition to that, she's not the one who agrees on the client's requirements. Now, my wife, uh, always been a fan of Spanish design and, uh, Vicky, as soon as, when Vicky came over, the first thing she said was, "Spanish design doesn't go with this neighborhood." Um, she was very intent on complimenting the, uh, neighborhood with mid-century design, uh, that would enhance, not overpower the surroundings. Next came the issue with the square footage and she was not for a block, you know, we could have gone on, on the existing home all the way up. We just look for minimum square foot, what do you need for a bedroom upstairs? And, and the small ten-by-twelve bedroom for our son would be, with two kids, it would be really, really difficult for him to stay downstairs.
Mr. Manur, I only wanna interrupt you for a moment, um, just to inquire, you're going to have your architect speak if you want, I would be happy to give you or she, uh, ten minutes also, but I need to know who.
Okay, uh, we have a presentation for you, uh, so that'll answer some of the questions.
In that case, I'll ask you to conclude that, this time.
Okay, so, uh, this is, this is very important for us because, you know, we worked really hard, we've, uh, we've looked at different options, we're going very simple. Uh, and, you know, I, I would just like to con, conclude by expressing the value of your approval for my family and myself. Our purpose is not to mansionize, not to attract that attention and we haven't spoken to, uh, you know, nobody, when someone knocked at our house, we always open. And I, I didn't hear any knocks, we were maybe not at home. And so I just wanna conclude, it's not like we want to create any issues here. We're trying to see, when you see the presentation, that'll explain why we're really not blocking anybody's view. And, uh, in addition to that, I have ten neighbors, uh, who have, uh, approved this project, have signatures and, uh, I, I've explained the project, these are all people between Santa Carla Lotte and Lauderdale.
Thank you, Mr. Manur. Let me hear from, uh, Vicky Barbieri. Barbieri, pardon me, uh, followed by Margaret Hammond. I was thinking from, I'm sorry, I know you're not Vicky, you must be Vicky, okay.
Look like. My name is Vicky Barbieri.
I was, I'm going to give ten minutes, but I'm going to deduct a part of that because of, uh, the length of time that your client took, so we'll give you, we'll give you seven and see how we go from there.
Good evening, city councilman and mayor. My name is Vicky Barbieri, I'm an architect in town and I've been selected for the clients as she just, he just spoke, to design this small project. Due to the circumstances that we were coming to this meeting and due to more circumstances, we have prepared and we have actualized new information where we came through during further studies of the circumstances and the mainly geography of this area. I would like to, uh, give one of them because some of the information that you have here till this point is not really accurate. And, um, we just prepared this one because I think we'll be close to see, to be able to see. This is a rendering of the, of the house as the final format. We have received through design review, uh, conditions and we have received this, through the alternative panel, conditions that the famous windows in the bathroom. Well, we have accepted all of them, we have modified on the plans, then if you pay attention to the back elevation of the house, you will see that that wall of glass has been eliminated and the bottom of the window is a five feet. All this, I think pictures are worth a thousand words and I think all this can, maybe it's in a different time of the year, these are pictures of the existing house and I would like to go through some of them for you to get more familiar really with the area. This is the existing house, driveway, as we all can see, this is existing view from the house and the existing one with the properties in the rear that you have seen before. This is a very important one where you can see an aerial from where this house is located and the course around the houses and pictures from different angles that I think will show you and put yourself in exactly a very approximate the geography, the landscaping, the height and the position of all these structures. These are the final elevations where we have modified to accept all the conditions that have been imposed to the project through the two bodies that have been reviewed till this point. And at one point it will show up the back elevation, there is the back elevation with those small windows, that is the only windows that are pointing to the rear. Here we have a plan of the existing house and it's not so significant unless we pinpoint two of the areas. One, this people doesn't have no backyard whatsoever. This is almost a triangle lot, very difficult, has a steep slope in the back and there is no place where the kids can play, the front is covered with concrete and we need to reorganize this floor plan in order to make this lot usable. When we say that, what we did to great expense to the client, we forward the garage to the front and we just connected and the addition four hundred square feet in the bottom is no more than a conclusion of the restructuring of the floor plan and not this family room that is so used to the way that we live today. And that will allow them to have some area in the back. This is the roof plan combined with the second story, it's around seven hundred square feet, is the master bathroom and the babies, kids next door to them because they prefer to have it next door and not downstairs, as you can see. And the size of the house, the addition in second story is very small, is located in the center part of the structure. And if we could've come back to some of the side plans, well, I don't know if in those computers you can do or not, is located practically in the center of the circle and the distance in between all the structures around it. We have now another picture of the front that was changed from the original due to the suggestions or conditions of all the boards who has reviewed this project. Okay, there is very important, I hope I can talk very fast. We continue with, this is a legal survey of the property and the surrounding areas. The upper part is where the neighbors, that is the part where the neighbors' houses are and I'm gonna tell it to be fast. The neighbor in the corner, the first there, their house is sitting the elevation of, if I memorize correctly, hundred and twenty, twenty-nine? So, twenty-five? Twenty-nine feet is the part of the house. The pad of my client's house is hundred and eight. In top of that, they have a fence that is six foot high. What it means that this is the land in between their houses and my client's houses, where they start showing you the slope in between one property and the other one. We are talking about a different elevation of twenty-five to one. There, there is the other part of the slope. What it means that we are going to have soon a section that is showing to you what is there is, and I cannot approach, but if somebody could read, it's hundred and twenty-nine the pad plus six feet is hundred and thirty-two and the top point of the roof of the second story addition is one and a half lower than the top of the fence. Then nobody standing in that backyard can really see anything of this structure because it's, the top of the roof is lower than the top of the fence. And if we come back to that, this is the situation for the house of the appellant, that is the situation for the house next door. And that respond to a certified survey of the property. When, uh, I think there is some axonometrics of the elevations that you will see, the volumes of one structure like that, the house of the appellants with the elevation of the pad and then the three-dimensional block of the house that we are proposing. If you look at the fence where they are of the house and you see where the top of the, the tip of the roof is, there is no way that these people or anybody from that property can see no wall whatsoever, less no windows, less not intercepting any views. There is another one, this is the house and this is the addition that we are proposing. I would like you to see the height of the fence. I, and I know my ten minutes is over, Mr. Freeman, what, what do I do, I continue?
Well, let us, uh, let me ask you to-
There is, two, two, one second and I finish.
Ma'am, you asked me a question, let me answer you.
Yes.
Let me ask you to conclude as best you can and I'm sure that we will come to some of this in the questions from the council.
Very good. I don't know how many more slides, but this is a very representative of where the pads are, where the sizes, it represents exactly the volume of existing structures, where the fences are, like the one in the appellant, and what is exactly the situation with this house in the corner. And one more, and this is exactly from the street in the back, what it could get to see of that addition. And the last, and I conclude my presentation.
Alright, question? Mr. Weaver, going, going back a slide.
Two sides now, that one there.
Yes, sir.
So, you're saying it's only the crown of the roof, of the second story, that they will see?
Absolutely.
Those coming down, it's just the top portion, small triangular piece that will be visible looking straight out from their fence.
Yes, sir. Without, I'm sorry, can't do with all the vegetation that is in that canyon in between them that is going to, and that respond is a geometric, a mathematically, a computer generator, a, a 3D that respond exactly to our certified survey.
Alright, thank you. Let, let me ask while the speaker is here, well, actually, we, we have more speakers, so let me, let me finish up and then we'll come back to the council and, uh, I'm sure, I know we're going to have a number of questions, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, our last two speakers, Margaret Hammond, followed by Sandra Shields.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, uh, particularly the planning staff. As you know, there has been, we have been working on ordinance for the last, what, two years probably, trying to talk about compatibility, uh, privacy, uh, problems and view. And, uh, hopefully we thought that, that it was going to be able to be enforced, but I guess because this project started earlier. Now, the fact being that once their view is gone, it's gone. The incompatibility, how can you say this is compatible, a two-story house stuck on the corner surrounded by one-story homes? How can that possibly be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood? I mean, not in my mind. I mean, it would be like, my God, having the Empire State Building stuck in the middle of downtown Glendale. I mean, it would be like, wow. Uh, I don't think this is what you can call, uh, a neighborly, uh, gesture of having a two-story addition, uh, if they can possibly keep it to the one-story. Now, all of this would be resolved if the story poll rule were enforced. All you'd have to do is put up those story polls and you would see what it would look like. There wouldn't be all this if-and's and buts and pictures and drawings and whatever. There would, that would be it, fact. And that's why it's really important, of course, to have those story polls enforced when there is, and this is hillside, this is whatever, uh, pads above each other, so forth. This is well, and remember this, I know I live on a hillside lot. I mean, if my view were gone, it would destroy the value of my home. These other people, that their views are gonna be affected, their whole, uh, area of their neighborhood, there sits this literally Empire State Building on the corner of their street in the middle of their community. Uh, now, this is not compatible. I thought that was one of the rules that we talked about or one of the ideas that we would enforce for it to be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. Thirteen hundred square feet homes and so forth, and this is gonna be more than double that size. So, I don't think, as well as destroying, I think, the, uh, view of the neighborhood. Uh, as you go up Santa Carla, there will be this thing sitting on the corner with all their little toadstools around it. So, uh, I think it's, uh, really not in good, um, faith with the rest of the neighborhood to allow this to be built. I mean, all the other neighbors, they pay their dues, their taxes, they bought their homes with the idea that that would be guaranteed because it was in their deeds. They didn't know that it wasn't enforceable supposedly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Sandra Shields.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Sandra Shields and I live at three-seven-three-seven Paraiso Way and I'm, uh, to the north and five houses down from this project and I appreciate the operate, uh, the opportunity to speak. Um, what I would like to do is, is to support the Fosters. Actually, I would like to support what's highest and best for the entire neighborhood. Um, we have found this process to be painful, uh, we don't want to have any problems or disagreements in our neighborhood, are the applicants are good people, um, and, and we have found this whole process troubling. I just wanted to say- I just wanted to say and reinforce what the other speakers have said, is that if you've seen your report before you, these houses are all one-story. This neighborhood was built in nineteen fifty-six. They're all mid-century modern homes. The, when you saw that really startling picture of Helen and Robert Foster's backyard, that is, all of the houses that will be facing this project, the back of the houses are all walls of glass, so you're actually looking out of your living room, your dining room, your kitchen, onto this addition. And it really will take the view of three neighbors. These are view lots. We did all buy these properties with the idea that we would be able to maintain our views. And it certainly points to the problem, as Margaret Hammond was saying, in terms of the real need for view ordinances that would protect our neighborhood and many others. The other thing that I wanted to say is that certainly with homeowners' rights, you know, nobody's obligated to inform anybody else of anything. But I think it would have been a common courtesy for these neighbors, these neighbors to invite everybody over, talk about the project, to support us having story polls, because one of the things is that when we add up the square footage of this house and what the elevations are going to be, we come up with a different idea than what the architect has presented. And it certainly would be great for everyone to see the story polls to really know exactly what the impact of the project is. As far as we have calculated, that this second story will sit smack in the middle of Helen and Robert Foster's house, and it will also take the Kim's view completely. So I think that not only is it not compatible with the neighborhood, but I think that it would have been better had we proceeded with a meeting with the neighbors and discussion to talk about everybody's concern. So in conclusion, I'm really urging the council to reject this project and to support the continuation of our neighborhood. As far as the signatures that the applicant presented, you know, Lowell and far down on Santa Carlotta are not as impacted by the immediate neighborhood. So none of, nobody that lives in the immediate neighborhood don't sign that petition. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Those are the, that is the last of the speaker cards. I will close the public hearing portion. Let me go to my-
Can we give that?
Let me go to my colleagues. I'll start on my left, Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Gunning, this is our one zone. What's the floor ratio?
Uh, Mr. Weaver is point four.
Point four, so on a seventy-four-hundred square foot lot, point four, they can bill almost three thousand, right?
Right.
If we want to start down the road on these homes that, in essence, every one of them could almost be doubled in size, then we're saying our floor ratio ratios are wrong again. We would have to look at going through the whole city again and downzoning the FAR in all these areas. I don't think that's realistic at this time to do that. Also, I know it's a hilly area. My best friend used to live on Santa Carlotta, so I'm very familiar with the area. I know they're single fam, or single-story, but I also know there's no view ordinance in this city. We have not enacted one yet. As far as I can tell, we're unlikely to ever adopt a view ordinance, because where do you draw the line on view? We're certain the people that are living on the flatlands of Glendale don't have views, for sure. And I can read drawings. That's one thing I know I can do. And just looking at this schematic, looking at the Google Maps, all the homes surrounding except for the app, the appellant, the side of their house is perpendicular to this particular house. They say they're losing their view, or this is going to be interfering with their view. Maybe only in their backyards. The one north and the one east have different views when they look out the windows. They're not looking out the end of their houses, most likely. They're looking out the long way of the house. The difference in elevation show that the crown of the house is what will be visible to the appellant. And that's what I asked that question, and that's confirmed by the difference in elevations. You're going to see the pitch, and it's dropping five feet. By the time you get to the edge of the roof line, you're below the fence line, not visible. Heavy vegetation's there part-time, yes, I guess in the summer months. Google Map, they can, they don't say what month, but there's heavy vegetation obstructing view too. The plans clearly indicate, the one bedroom that is facing east has two windows. I don't know what the elevations are. But on the view facing to the north towards the appellant, there's a walk-in closet with no windows. There's another walk-in closet with no windows. There are two bathrooms. Generally, you're not standing looking out your bathroom windows at the neighbors. If anything, you're going to pull the blind down or whatever. I think we told the applicant to move the windows higher elevation, at least five foot off the floor. That's what I have in my house too, for privacy reasons. And a lot of times, bathroom, the drapes are drawn. So assuming that the people are going to be, with the second floor addition, are going to be looking up the window from the bathroom to spy on their neighbors, it's not going to happen. And the neighbor's only going to see the crown of the roof line. So I can't find an objection. If you're going to expand, I don't know where on the lot you're going to do it. It's one of the, the way it's configured in a triangular shape, I don't know where you can put the addition, still have room yard for kids to play in. Just looks like it's impossible. I think it's a modest second floor addition. When you talk about compatibility, I tend to look compatibility first being in relation to architectural design and how it fits into the neighborhood, like Mediterranean won't work. These are all one particular type of house and it matches that. It's not overwhelming, it's small. It's set back fifty-some feet from the neighbors. That's a good distance away. You don't know how many we've had come to council where they're five, six feet away from each other. That's a whole different issue. So I sincerely don't think the neighbors are going to be impacted by this. Maybe you say people are going to drive by that intersection, put their brakes on, says, oh, my God, look at that. I don't think that's going to happen. I think it'll fit in fairly decently, and it's the best compromise. And I guess what the city's going to have to do, because today, times are changed. At least I remember growing up in the forties and fifties, there was no television. We used to listen to the radio in the living room and used to play games in the living room or go out for walks. Fifty years later, everybody now has a family room, right? Because you have a large screen TVs, you have video games, and you have everything else, the necessity for a different style of living, family room. And today, you can't talk about having two kids in one room if they're different sexes. You've got to have separate bedrooms. I grew up with my sister, we had one bedroom for many years until they could afford add-ons, so we had separate bedrooms. But it's the commonplace more today. So I would not be surprised in the future years, when we're all gone, they're going to see more of these houses, trying to increase their sizes from fifteen, fourteen-hundred square feet up to twenty-five-hundred because of the style of living today. And if the floor ratio says point four and they can pass the test through the design process, they're going to be built. It's going to be reality as people move into the area, seeing what they can do. If they do their due diligence and they check and find out what they're permitted to do there, and they get a good architect and lay it out, neighbors are going to be down here more and fighting every addition. We have second floors up in Glen Oaks Canyon that have been added. It was all one-story when I grew up. Starting to change. Spot here and here will set a second floor addition going in. Architecturally done very nice. As far as I know, no objections from my neighborhood to those second floor additions because of the way they were placed on the lots. And separation between those houses is much closer than what is in this house. And staff is trying to be sensitive to the fact, if you're going to put in windows on the side, no, no. You put them to your backyard or something, so you're trying to create as much privacy for your neighbor as you can. Want to put a bathroom on that side, fine. With a high window, fine. You don't put a big picture window so you can sit on the second floor looking down into your neighbor's yard. That's a no-no. I'm sure that's what staff is doing. That's what we're trying to educate the architects in the committee to do the same thing. So if we're going to change the FAR down the road, down to point two or point three to prevent any further growth in this neck of the woods, well, then it'll happen. But until then, needs code, needs every, everything that I can think of in terms of making it compatible to the area. Not necessarily compatible to the adjacent next-door neighbors who don't want anything. Understand that. That's really not reality to me. So I will vote to sustain the decision of the Design Review Board and Appeals Panel.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, well, I see it totally different. So here's my reasoning. Let me start by saying that I was flipping through the channels and when I come across the DRB presentation, and it just so happened that I had driven down Santa Carlotta about a week before that on a sunny afternoon, and so listening to the presentation from the very beginning, I was not persuaded at all. I did not think that a second-story addition on this street was a good idea. I think the house is not compatible to the neighborhood. It's not compatible to the immediate neighborhood and not compatible to Santa Carlotta and some of the side streets. I think it's too large, the FAR is too high. They're all one-story homes in this neighborhood. That's the bottom line, all over this track, if you want to call it that, they're all one-story homes. And I personally don't want to start a trend. We have dealt with this in the Verdugo Woodlands, in the northwest, in Chevy Chase, on Adams Hill, where existing neighborhoods, little by little, began to change, began to go in a different direction. I don't believe the majority of Glendale residents want this. And in terms of the house itself, it's a large home. It's got three bedrooms on the bottom floor, it's got an office, which should also serve as a bedroom, but three bedrooms and office, two baths, a living room and a family room. So it's got a good, large, these new plans. That's a lot of square footage. And then it's got two bedrooms and two baths on the top floor. So it's a lot of square footage. The total square footage, counting the attached garage, is three thousand one hundred and forty-two. The house alone is twenty-seven hundred square feet without the garage. Average size in that neighborhood, and there's an awful lot of, there's nineteen homes that were surveyed on Santa Carlotta and Paraiso Way. And the average is sixteen hundred, one thousand five hundred ninety-nine. So from sixteen hundred, we're going to go to a twenty-seven hundred square foot home, not counting the attached garage. That's an awful lot of, that's a big jump in the square footage. When we were going through this whole DRB, revamping the DRB, I was big on choosing one-third, choosing that percentage. I even said I'm a fair guy, I'd even go thirty-five percent. That is, you would look at the surrounding homes around this house and you would be allowed to go up one-third, one-third in square footage. And doesn't pass that test. And I use one-third so that everyone is on the same page when these property owners have lived there for many years. But you don't run into a situation where a home is sold and in that transaction, the new buyer, either told by the real estate agent or just in his own mind, that new buyer is immediately thinking, well, it's only two thousand square feet, but no problem, I'll get it up to four, I'll get it up to forty-five. That would end. That would end. Well, it didn't, that particular rule didn't pass, but I, overall, I'm just not impressed with the presentation. I'm very impressed with this particular architect. She's done an incredible job throughout the years. I know numerous projects that she's worked on. She's done a great job, both commercial and single-family homes. So I'm happy that the property owner chose her. And I'm also happy that they decided to stick to the ranch and mid-century modern architect that prevails in that neighborhood. So overall, I'm not opposed to enlarging the home, but I do think a seven-hundred-and-something square foot second-floor addition, when there's nothing but single-story homes surrounding this property, I don't think that's appropriate. And we did a lot of work to make sure that this ordinance and that the DRBs would head in a different direction from what we've been having to deal with for the past few years. And this is literally the first case that comes before us. I know it's under the old rules, but it's still the first case that comes before us, and I won't support it. I will support a larger home for a growing family, but maybe a split level, I don't know. Very talented architect, I'm sure she can come up with something. But this particular addition, I just don't, I don't agree with, so I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najarian.
You know, I have a couple of questions. First off, from someone from the planning department, does someone have a copy of the deed restriction on that home which limits it to a single story? We do have a copy. While that's being brought up, Mr. Garcia, what, what force and effect do we have? Let me ask, let me rephrase that. What force and effect does that deed restriction have on us? Now presumably, anyone buying a home with a deed restriction understands that there's limits to what they can do to their property, except anything that's been declared unconstitutional regarding race, creed, ethnic background, et cetera. And I know the city didn't create that, that's not an ordinance that we've worked on, but that's something that was created presumably at the time the tract was, was made. What am I supposed to do with that restriction that says one-story homes?
Councilman Najarian, essentially that deed is a, it's a private restriction, it's enforceable privately. It should have no effect on the city council's review of this decision. What should guide the city's review is the city's code and the design guidelines which govern design review in this situation.
Doesn't the city's action approving, let's assume that this is approved, doesn't this indicate our, clearly, our acquiescence, our agreement that a second story is acceptable to the city? Can that be taken to a court of law? There is a challenge to that. Couldn't the, those opposing this say, look, regardless of what this deed restriction says, the city council felt that a second story was okay? I mean, clearly, that's a piece of evidence they can bring before the judge, could they not?
They might bring it before. I can't speak to what a judge would rule on in a, in a private lawsuit between two parties on that deed restriction. I doubt, frankly, I doubt that they would take that into consideration, would be taken into consideration as the intent of the parties in creating the covenant and whether the, the property owner had notice of that covenant.
On its face, is there anything that, that you can see that would hold this deed restriction to be- to be not applicable, illegal, contrary to the law? Mr. Howard, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, while we could certainly answer that question, under the charter, the city attorney's office is restricted to giving legal advice to the city council related to your official duties, the interpretation of the charter, and the interpretation of the municipal code, and how that all interplays. Essentially, what you're asking us to do is interpret a private document, whether it be a deed restriction, CCNRs, or a private agreement between the parties. That's the very reason that we can't do that. Because one, well, our goal or our job is to remain neutral in those kinds of circumstances. If we decide to interpret it, in our view, for example, reading it on its face or otherwise, looking at extrinsic evidence to interpret it, and our interpretation favors one side as opposed to another, we're essentially breaking that neutrality and getting involved in this private, if you will, dispute or this private disagreement over the interpretation of that document. And it's something we shouldn't be doing.
On its face, and I haven't read it, on its face, I'm not asking you how to interpret it, is there anything that would, that violates constitutional law with regard to the factors which have previously been set as precedent regarding?
Like a race restrictive covenant? I haven't read it, so somebody else can indicate if there's a race restricted covenant.
I haven't.
I haven't seen it.
I don't have. I mean, this is a problem I have, sitting here, trying to decide what I should do. We've got, we've got old city zoning analysis, we've got new city analysis, and we've got this deed restriction that's sitting out there, which is, you know, the 600-pound elephant that's sitting in the room. Part of the problem I have with this project, and with any project, is there's two ways of thinking. There's the subjective mind, and there's the objective mind. The subjective mind says, "Well, it appears as though this roof line is," if I take Ms. Barberi's word, "this roof line is one and a half feet below the six-foot, the elevation of the six-foot fence." And if I presume that to be correct, I then look at the style of the design, which is a very attractive style, and I say to myself, "Well, I guess it's not that bad." Although I do wish, I mean, the critical point for all of us here is how, from this view, which indicates the Verdugo Mountains, the fence, and the glass, the wall of glass, essentially, is where would this home, this new proposed second-story appear in this picture? I wish I had that. All these other pictures, I mean, if there was just one picture that you needed to show us, that's what I would have liked to see. But I'm going to assume that what Ms. Barberi tells me is correct, that it's one foot below. We've seen the setback is 51 feet. So subjectively, I say to myself, "Well, it's not that bad. What's so bad about it?" Really shouldn't disturb their view. But I go to the other side of my brain. Not speaking like Mr. Yusefian.
Yes, you are. You absolutely are.
I don't want to go too far. Objectively, we have set criteria. We have set criteria, and I was going to jump all over you, Mr. Quintero, if you deviated one inch from your previous discussions, but I've got to give it to you, you were entirely consistent with your analysis. We have set up objective criteria, such as average square foot, increase over average square feet. The rule, and I'm not sure if it was codified as such, but look at four houses on either side of this project, look at eight houses across the street. Now, if I were to take that snapshot, planning staff, are any of those homes, four houses on the north side of, excuse me, yes, on the north side of Santa Carlotta, and eight houses on the south side of Santa Carlotta, are any of those homes two stories? Any of them? Any of them? No. This was a huge issue when this council sat down and tried to remove the gut feeling, the subjectivity of this whole process. We tried to make it as concrete as possible, to remove the gut feeling, saying, "Well, I kind of like this one and I don't like that one." Am I correct about that, Mr. Quintero? I mean, that's something that we really spent some time doing. So these are the difficulties that--
Try men's souls.
Yes, that try our souls. Let's see, what were my other points here? They're approaching the limit of the FAR, objectively speaking. The actual size of the home is significantly larger than the square footage of the surrounding And I've got this deed restriction out there that says there's single-family, excuse me, single-story homes permitted in this area. But on the other hand, maybe it doesn't block their view too much. But as I think the point Mr. Weaver said, once we start to change one home, then it becomes a stepping stone for a changing of the entire composition of the neighborhood. I've been all over on this. I was thinking subjective mind earlier today. I said, "Well, it's really not that bad. The view of the Verdugos would be hardly impacted at all." But we've tried to move away from the, you know, the gut feeling, or it feels, you know, like it's a good project or a bad project. And if we go back to where this council has been going with the more focused, objective criteria that we had discussed, we tackled that for quite some time.
Ad nauseam.
Ad nauseam. I've got to say that a second-story doesn't belong in this neighborhood. And I believe that's, and coupled with this deed restriction, which is overhanging everyone that may end up in Superior Court anyway, I just can't go forward and approve the second story.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Well, like you, and no pun intended, Councilmember Najarian, I've been all over the lot on this myself, literally and figuratively. And my mind has been changed one way, changed back the other, as I have looked at this, considered it, reconsidered it. Couple of things I want to get to or ask some questions. One has to do with, a number of speakers have come up and said, "You know, this whole issue is a problem in general. It's too bad we don't have story polls. It's too bad we don't have any definition about compatibility or haven't addressed the issue. It's too bad we haven't looked at view," or so on. And we have done all of that, by the way. The problem is that this particular project is, I don't know, call it, put whatever term you like to it, a pipeline issue, or it predated our work on DRB. And it is issues exactly like this, no matter how the council comes out on this particular matter. It was for reasons just like this discussion that we took this on in the first place. I want to clarify or ask a question. The issue of story polls, which normally, if this project had come after the council's changes to DRB, would have been required possibly by the planning administrator, and he sort of indicated earlier that he may well have requested those or required those. My question is, did anybody ask, just as an academic question, that the applicant put up story polls? Mr. Higani.
Yes, the members of the community asked, and the Design Review Board actually gave the option to the applicant, so that if they so chose, they could have put up the story polls. However, the DRB did not require the story polls because even under the previous rules, they would have had the authority to require them.
Okay. And I'm assuming from all the different photographs, none with polls with flags on them, that the answer was no. No, we're not putting up story polls.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
That's accurate.
All right. Let me also get to the issue that Councilmember Quintero raised, and then Councilmember Najarian There was a reason that when we did discuss DRB issues, we didn't go with the idea of six houses on one side, six houses on the other, take the average of them, and then take 35%. There is a reason. And the reason is because you could end up with the kind of monster project that Margaret Hammond was talking about right next door, because in this case, they all happen to be one-story. But you could be in a block where three doors down, there's a very large house, and then two doors down from that is even a larger house. So you take the average, you could end up with a very large home. That's why we didn't go that direction. Instead, we settled on different language, which one of, I think Mr. Ettinger, I think Mr. Ettinger mentioned, well, maybe it was Mr., no, excuse me, it was Mr. Foster, who pointed out the language about special attention is to be paid to the homes in the immediately adjacent area, or immediately adjacent to the subject property. That's why we opted for that language instead. It wasn't that we were ignoring Councilmember Quintero's point, it's that we wanted to make sure that the meaning behind what he was saying somehow found its way into the Let me see. Mr. Higani, the issue of compatibility related to second stories. Now, you'll recall when we were debating this issue, and it got a little tense at a couple of points, and we had a visit from, actually at my request, from most of our DRB board members, or board members at that time. One of them came forward, and the subtext of our exchange, mine and his, was about, "Well, are you simply trying to eliminate the construction of second-story homes?" Do you remember that?
I--
In essence?
In essence, I do.
A concept?
Yes, I do.
What exactly is a homeowner in that neighborhood allowed to build? Can they build a second story, or can't they?
If I may answer it this way, they are not prevented from building a second story, even under the current DRB direction that you gave us. You did not write out ban second stories in predominantly single-family residential areas.
So the question about whether a second story could be added has more to do with what?
Compatibility and--
And how intrusive?
How intrusive it is, how it's incorporated into the design, et cetera.
Okay. All right. At this point, I would like to now ask a couple of questions of our DRB member who is here, who boldly came forward earlier to volunteer to answer questions. DRB member, well, actually Chair Friedman. Can you quickly take me or us as a council through what the thinking was with regard to the original decision and then the, and I can't remember, on the BZA, excuse me, the BZA, the Alternative Assessment Panel? I don't know whether you were one of the DRB members that sat on that or not. Were you?
I was on both boards.
Both boards, okay. Can you sort of give me the brief 4-1-1 on--
Sure.
--how the decision-making came down?
Yeah, and maybe I can clarify some of how we came to the decision we did. First, I'll point out that the first time that the case was heard in front of DRB2, it was a 5-0 decision. When it was heard by the AAP, it was a 3-2 decision with one of the original board members changing his mind. So just wanted to throw that out there. We felt as a board that a lot of the issues that were brought up had to do with view, that a lot of the objections from the appellant were view-related. And we were specifically instructed by planning staff that view is something that we were not to take into consideration, that there was not a view ordinance, and that we, as a board, could really only deliberate on the issues that we were instructed to deliberate on. And view is specifically not one of them. So that can explain some of that. That said, we do take privacy very seriously, and we take intrusive structures very seriously. The architects on the board, like Mr. Weaver, had come up, had looked at all of the numbers, had looked at the slope of the property, and felt comfortable that although from the one house, a portion of the roof would be visible, it was a very small portion, they would not be able to see in any windows. In fact, we didn't think the wall would even be visible from that house. And from the other houses, because of the orientation of the houses, that would have even less of an impact. The house on the side, which might sit a little bit lower than this house, the architects didn't feel would be able to see the house at all because of the sightline and the roof. Because when you're standing, those houses are so close together, and because this addition is set away from that house, when you're looking up the slope of the roof, you'll basically see what you see now, which is straight up to the top of that single-story, and you're not going to be able to see beyond that to the addition that's set on the other side of the house. We felt for the applicant, given that with the shape of the lot that they have, we didn't think that they would be able to do any kind of meaningful first-story addition. It's just not possible, given the size of the lot. We felt that they had really gone kind of beyond the call to find the right place to do the second story. And then it was kind of like a balance, you know, what they would be benefited versus what the neighbors, the drawbacks that they would have. I think that the appellant, that the photo that they showed of the fence, that they might be able to see some of that house, but the question to us was, does their 180-degree view, is that something that is sort of guaranteed to them once they buy that house? Luckily, we didn't feel we had to answer that because we were told by planning staff that we were not to take that into consideration. So just looking at compatibility and massing, we felt comfortable, at least three of us felt comfortable, that this house was acceptable.
May I interrupt you just one second? Mr. Higani, if that project had been under the current or the new DRB arrangement, would that instruction have been given?
Yes, in the context that Ms. Friedman just mentioned, the same instruction would have been given. The only difference would have been that we would have required the story polls. Other than that, everything else would have been treated the same way.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Friedman.
That's basically it. We, in terms of the square footage, that was something we talked about. But we had never been given the instruction to only, we could only go a third above the average of the houses. That wasn't something that was presented to us. And I'm still not clear if that's something that is part of the code or not.
No, it was not.
It's not something that actually that planning has ever instructed us to take into account. We looked at what they were allowed to build, which was a much larger house, and they chose to go for a smaller addition, which was only adding a 700-square-foot room on the second story. And we made the decision that we did, in taking, you know, the neighbors and the homeowners into account and realizing that it's a difficult decision. That was the best we could do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not from me. But I want to, I want to wrap up, but if my colleague asks a question of you while you're there--
Just on your point, Ms. Freeman, about being able to build a larger house, what, I mean, at .39 FAR, aren't they right at the ceiling of a .40 FAR, which is the limit?
You have to remind me of the numbers of what they were able to build.
Their maximum FAR is .4, yeah.
Okay, so they couldn't have built a much, I mean, maybe a few 10-square-feet or something. So they're pretty much at the top, okay?
Yeah, and granted, it is a house that is larger than what's around it.
Okay, I just had that question. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to come now to the, I don't know what to call it, petition or the paper that has the signatures on it, that was presented by Mr. Menour, who's the property owner. I've looked at those addresses and put them on the little location map, and I see that all of them are, only one of them is north of Santa Carlotta, and that is two blocks up on Burrit. And I doubt that either way--
It says Burrit, please.
Well, it says Burrit Way.
I know. Got bad memories of another deliberation.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry. Sorry about that. Yes, well, the unnamed street that is two blocks north, that looks like it starts with a B and ends with a T. Only one of the houses on that petition, or list of names that rather, that agreed that or support the idea of the second story, is there. All the rest are either south of the subject property or on the same block and to the east of the subject property. That would be the Ahmed, the Shields, not the Shields, the Stockamers, the Forster, if I'm reading the handwriting right, the Greens, the Russicks, the Blacks, the Coons and Stewart's, the Seibels and the Carcoers are all either on the same block and to the east or south of this property. So their view would not, it's not that they're not in the neighborhood, it's just that their view, it's not a view issue with them. Only one of them sits behind this property, and that's two blocks up and to the east. So that doesn't help me. to the east. So, that doesn't help me. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't do for me, I think, what Mr. Menour, uh, might have hoped it would. So I come back to this. So what can it, you know, what can we actually see? I'm hearing from the appellant that it's, uh, and some of the people who spoke on behalf of the appellant, that it is a monolith. Project's going to be a monolith, uh, standing up like, as Margaret put it, uh, the, uh, the, yes, the Empire State Building, I almost said the Wrigley Building, the Empire State Building in this single-story neighborhood. And from the applicant and the architect, I'm hearing that it is something that on this diagram, and several others like it, on that diagram, um, will barely be seen, and certainly no windows. Um, I, uh, there's something amiss there. I don't know whether it is confusion, I don't know whether it's exaggeration, I don't know what it is all about. Uh, this is a good reason why story polls would have solved a lot of the confusion. Uh, it is clearly a well-designed house, and a very attractive-looking house. Um, and I, I don't know how to, how to say this to you without creating drama, but based on all of that, uh, I want to say three things. One is that I, I am going to support the, um, the applicant on this, um, this particular issue, uh, which means, that's number one. Number two, it means that this council has just split two-two, as I count it, which means that, I don't know what that means. Uh, so we're going to turn to City Attorney in just a moment, um, and, uh, to further the drama, Mr. Howard.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as they say, it ain't over till it's over, so we actually have to take a vote to confirm that. But assuming the vote is a tie vote under our charter, a tie vote is carried from agenda to agenda until that tie is either broken, or a majority of the council determines to remove the item from the agenda.
Right. So, uh, we need time for Councilmember Yusefian to have an opportunity to look at the information, to review this, uh, here, this meeting, and this public hearing, and form his-
He did watch it.
Pardon me?
Maybe he is watching.
Well, he may be, but he may be, and he may not be, and he, if I know Councilmember Yusefian, he's going to want to do his in-depth research anyhow, before he forms his conclusions. Uh, the last thing I wanted to say before, before I turn it back to my colleagues is, did I correctly hear one of my colleagues suggest that it might be a good idea to consider the downzoning of this area in general, anyway?
I said that if, if that is what community of Locust City wants, we'd better go through the whole area.
Well, I submit to you, we won't know unless we have that as a public, unless it's an agendized item. Uh, I have heard it suggested by others. Um, I, I don't know how I feel about that, but I do know that I'm willing to hear it, and if my colleagues are of a mind to do that. Um, matter of fact, I've heard that suggestion from colleagues on this council, other than you, Mr. Weaver. But, uh, I don't know if there is a mind to do that, or to look at this, but I certainly am willing. Councilmember Quintero?
I certainly would like to put it on the agenda.
Um, and I certainly would like to hear it. That's three. I don't know whether-
Can of worms, I would rather not get into that, but I will defer to the majority of the council.
All right, so let's, uh, let's, yes.
Uh, if I may, with regard to that, one of the directions that we asked, we asked you to give us, and you gave us the direction in the general plan update, was to identify areas of the city that would be, uh, eligible for a, so one-story overlay zoning district. So we would create conservation areas in the city that single-family homes would stay at one, a single story. And this, this could be something that would be applicable citywide, because we know there are other neighborhoods in the city who would wish to have the same idea. So we were planning on approaching that in the general plan update, and identify several districts such as that one.
So it wouldn't be monkeying with the FAR, it'd be an overlay of one story only.
Is that the technical term, by the way, monkeying with?
Engineering term.
A lot of monkey business goes on.
Engineering term, yes.
I didn't say that.
Uh, Mr. Quintero?
Well, unless there's more discussion, I would move, uh-
Said we can't continue.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, given where you're going, as I noted, there's, there is another option, and that is continuing this matter to a date certain without further public notice, to give Councilmember Yusefian the opportunity to review this matter in form, and note for the record that he has fully reviewed it, and then continue your deliberations without receiving any further evidence. Uh, I should point out also for the record that, in addition to the oral testimony tonight, all written documents that have been submitted shall be deemed part of the record as well.
Mr. Just another thing. The public hearing is closed, so probably it's got to know that, I guess it's your choice if you want to open it again next time we convene on this, or leave it closed.
Well, we've done this both ways in the past.
Right, yes.
Um, actually, I think the last time, Mr. Weaver, you were the one that was not here, and had to review the, the materials afterward. Uh, I'll leave it to my colleagues as to what you choose to do.
And you can make that decision now, or you can make that decision at the new date for the quote-unquote deliberations.
Uh, if someone would like to make, I can't make a motion, folks, that's, that's the reason we're talking about this way, so-
I'd recommend the meeting, because you don't know what's going to happen in the interim, in terms of calls, or letters, or whatever.
Well, and I might caution the council about that potential slippery slope. These cases are quasi-judicial in nature, need to be decided based on the evidence of record that is submitted before you. If you're going to be hearing from individuals who are going to be trying to convince you to go one way or another, and provide other evidence, or submit something, that may require us to reopen the hearing anyway. So I should just caution the council about making sure the decision is made based on the evidence that you've heard at this public hearing, and it's part of the record, which includes the staff reports, the written documents that have been submitted, and the oral testimony tonight.
I'll make a motion reversing myself. Public hearing is closed, and that's it. We hear from Mr. Yusefian, and take a vote.
Second.
All right, so it would be the mayor's discretion ultimately to open or close it.
In the past, in the past, by custom and convention, we have deferred to the mayor to determine whether or not they want to allow a limited reopening of the public hearing to hear from, generally, it's been either the applicant or the appellant, or both for a limited period of time.
I would actually prefer that we, frankly, since we don't have a motion yet, my preference would be to vote on this, confirm whether or not we do indeed have a tie, tied vote, a split vote. If we do, then it would just be continued over, and Mr. Yusefian would do his, uh, whatever research that he is required from the evidence here that was presented, and the documents presented here, and review of the meeting itself, and make his determination as he sees fit.
Okay, then, as I thought so originally, I'll move nine-A two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the council? There is none. Mr. Kusakian, please.
Councilmembers, Engarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Yusefian?
Mayor Draymond?
No.
Now it's official.
We officially have a split vote.
Right. And by, by charter, it would, unless determined by the majority of the council, would be essentially reset for next week, because it carries from agenda to agenda. Unless the majority of this council now wants to continue it to a date certain to give Mr. Yusefian either additional time, or to make sure it fits on the agenda within the, and I have to turn to the city manager.
Let me, let me turn to our-
To determine what's on the upcoming agendas.
Let me turn to our assistant city manager and see what next week's agenda holds.
Um, let's see. Next Wednesday, the sixteenth, um, we have the proposed specific parpoo development, um, a, uh, couple of relatively routine items, denials and findings for Ambrosia Restaurant, and a hearing on establishing the Royal Boulevard Historic District Overlay Zone. That would be the agenda next week.
Yeah.
Pursuant to the charter.
And just so the public understands, there will be no further notice, public notice on this. This is consistent with our charter. It'll, it'll show up on the agenda posted at least seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting next Tuesday, but there will be no separate public notice provided to either the applicant, the appellant, or any of the neighbors.
Especially-
It's, this, this is a little bit different than the circumstance, I think, that you went down relative to the budget.
No doubt, it's different on this end.
Once a public hearing is closed, that testimony is over, unless there is a substantial change in the agenda item. And this one, there is no substantial change, because it's a public hearing that has been presented based upon the project that has been proposed before not only the Design Review Board, but also heard by the Alternatives Assessment Panel, uh, and Alternatives Appeals Panel, and now the City Council. So, there won't be any substantial change. Public hearing is closed, no new testimony is required for the round. Again, unless this, unless the mayor wants to defer and allow some limited reopening of the hearing.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. Just want to make sure that the deed, was the deed admitted into the record with the restriction?
It's part of, it's part of the record. It's part, it's part of the record, but again, I have to stress that, and just reading it, I have to tell you that that's one reason why my comment is even strengthened. While it is a nineteen forty-eight protective covenants provision that does talk in terms of a detached, single-family dwelling not to exceed one-story in height, there's an alternate provision that also talks about these covenants running with the land until January nineteen seventy-three, at which time the covenants shall be automatically extended for successive periods of ten years. Potentially, that's the soft underbelly of this, and that's why we don't interpret these private documents, because either way we go, it's going to be subject to judicial interpretation based upon the intent of the parties, and what the courts have said about these types of fifty-year-old-plus restrictive covenants.
I just wanted to see-
Yes, it's, it's part of the record. It is part of the record.
See that that was-
Hey, we can get copies of it.
That's another issue.
Can we get copies of that, too?
It'll be part of the record, and the planning director will have it.
Anybody involved, uh, may have been issued, never off, and it's not easy to work for a council.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Well, apparently, my pearls of wisdom weren't on the microphone, but I think you got the drift. Thank you. Um, Mr. City Clerk, our next item, please.
Next item would be going back to, unless you'd like to move on to new business before we return to oral communication, the next item would be returning to oral communication.
Okay, oral communications it is. I have no cards yet.
Two.
Right, right.
The following item on the agenda would be oral communication. Discussion is limited times, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allotted five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or-
Did you say new business? And I missed her.
No, it's that I don't have the cards. I did, but they went away. That's right.
I apologize.
Thank you.
No problem. And, uh, well, as I was saying, counsel, you may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager, or acting city manager, may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation or report.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Our first speaker is Margaret Hammond, followed by Charles B. I don't know if Charles B. is traveling in cognito, but it's the initial B, so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience. Um, my name is Margaret Hammond. Uh, within two days, or in two days, there will be, uh, memories of the horrendous nine-eleven event. And I think we need to keep in mind that those people who were killed in that event were murdered, and in the cause of what? Uh, terrorism to prove that, uh, or try to prove that they could frighten, uh, our country into, um, changing our ways of life. We have in some ways, but in other ways, not. But we do need to remember those people, and not forget them. And you know, it isn't just those, the people that died, it's all the people who survived. Their relatives, their mothers, their fathers, their brothers, their sisters. There were some people from here in Glendale who lost, uh, family in that nine-eleven. And I, uh, know that they will never forget, and feel what, um, a useless waste in a way that it was. But it, in, in another way, it isn't, because it reminds us that Americans will not tolerate being, um, challenged in a way that, uh, in our way of life, that we are going to continue to live our way of life, no matter who comes after us. And I do think that, uh, we need to have that kept in our memories, not allow it to go away, or to, um, be forgotten. I know the morning, that morning as it happened, I was going to a meeting, someone called me and said, "Turn on the TV, because I don't watch TV." And I saw the first tower just after it was hit. And I thought, "Well, why are they telling me to watch this? This is some kind of a crazy movie. What are they, what are they talking about?" And then when I heard the rest of it, and then in front of my eyes, the second plane hit, and it was just like, I, I thought, "Oh, this can't be real. We, this can't really be happening to us." And I think that was the feeling of a lot of Americans, that how could this happen to us? But I think it proves that it can happen, and we do need to be on our guard. But we should not be allowed to be intimidated by these people that feel that they can scare us or put us down. And I know that there were people, I can't, I know for a fact, there were people here in Glendale who actually cheered for the fact that that had happened here in America. I know you're looking at me very peculiarly, but this is true. There were witnesses to it, and it was reported to the authorities of where this was, um, a reason for, uh, I don't know whether it was joy, or whatever you would call it, but that we would be taught a lesson, uh, from this particular element of people that feel that Americans aren't what they think they are. And I think we've proved in the meantime that we are more than we think we are, and, and that we are going to continue to fight our battles, uh, in wherever we need to, in the name of liberty, and fairness, and freedom for everybody, not just ourselves. That's part of our problem, that we do take on, that we feel that it's part of our thinking, that we need to protect other people also. But I do think that I will never forget that morning. It was just like a horrible nightmare. It was like, just unbelievable that this could happen to us. So let us not forget the people that died in that, and also all their families that are, will suffer the rest of their lives, and their memories at the loss of their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Charles B. Uh, now, I know the answer to the mystery hooker is the last word, I was, last name I was looking for. Okay. Followed by Alan Dean?
What I wanted to say tonight was, a couple of weeks ago, I was involved in an automobile accident, and I was the person in the middle. And I want to thank the Glendale Police Department officer that stayed with me until the ambulance came. And I want to thank the Glendale Police Department for coming to the hospital and visiting me. And I think Glendale's got the best police department any city could ever have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooker. Uh, Alan Dean, followed by Mike Mochill.
I want to start out saying that you're an affable bunch, and I've enjoyed attending my first meeting, and I'll make it happen from now. Um, my issue is about a thing colloquially, colloquially called, uh, horn lock, automobile horn lock, I think it's technically called a keyless remote. It's where, it's where people click a little, their keychain, and it locks all their things. There's various kinds. Some have a almost inaudible chirp, you, just the owner can hear when they're standing right next to the door. And some have a louder chirp, some have a very loud chirp. But what I'm complaining about tonight is about the full-on horn, a really loud blast of a horn. I don't know if a council can do anything about it. It's going to be illegal someday, some, some way, because a lot of people are really, just feel physically threatened, jolted by it, um, and as soon as possible. I live at the corner of Broadway and Carr. Broadway, of course, is a Broadway, it's a big old boulevard, you expect a lot of noise. Carr is a one-block-long, cute little residential side street, ending at, uh, Carr Park. And I was late to the party, and finally figuring out about a half a year ago, that, uh, the noise, it's a real noisy location. I live, I live in the corner apartment downstairs. The noise that I'm hearing that really perturbs me isn't coming from Broadway, it's coming from Carr Street. And the reason it, the reason- And the reason it, the reason it comes is because really cavalier people park on the street, walk away from their car 20, 30, 50, 200 feet, press the thing with a really blissful, nonchalant smile on their face, and I jump out of my skin if I'm sitting at my desk, which is right at the window, or I wake up in the middle of the night. And I think that's basically all I have to say. It's a, it's a, there are, I'm definitely not the only person who's really, apparently, that's not all I had to say. I'm not the only person who's upset about it, and there are, in fact, a lot of people write blogs and websites about it. It's really disturbing. It's a bit like, this is sort of an audio version of the visual of what you guys were talking about before of the second story, as if that second story collapsed onto their neighbors' homes several times a day. And it just, personally, it freaks me out, and it bothers a lot of other people, too. Again, I don't know what specifically you guys could do about it. The cops aren't interested, they even came out yesterday. I received, actually, to tell you the truth, last night, a death threat from one of my neighbors because I was complaining about his alarm. So it is escalating, and I hope that something can be done sooner than later. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Dean, since your, this is your first council meeting, let me take the opportunity then to also remind everybody that the reason we're not responding to you necessarily is because we hold all of our comments to the end of the oral communications portion, and then if any of the council members choose to respond to individual speakers, they do. Mike Mohill appears not to be here, so I'll move on to our next speaker, which is Sergio Lalayian, followed by Linda Lalayian. Well, it's actually, I did call him first. If you're Sergio...
Oh, please.
Oh, you want to go first?
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
We have orchestrated, so, you know, we speak after one another. Okay. My name is Linda Lalayian, and I live on East Harvard, near Glendale High School. And first of all, I want to have your attention first before I continue speaking. First of all, I want to thank the Glendale Traffic and Parking Department, and I think Mr. Zurn and Mr. Starbird, who helped us with changing the parking signs to one-hour parking signs, and I really, we really appreciate that. However, we would like to ask for the one-hour parking signs to be enforced now, especially when the football games are going to start. I'm here today to show you the schedule for Loyola High School games, that in the previous years, they were only three weekends, and now they have increased to about six weekends. They are the loudest and the most attended games, about 10,000, and this was a set, you know, someone told me from Glendale High School, actually, one of the staff, that about 10,000, they expect 10,000 visitors to these games every time Loyola plays. Now, you can see all the games, most of the, well, not all of the games are played not with Glendale High Schools, but other schools. So basically, Glendale High School and Glendale Unified School District is making, making money. I guess they've gotten a little greedy this year, and they've increased their games, renting the field to Loyola, not three times this, this year, but six times. And the good neighbors that they are, as they have indicated several times, I guess they've decided to invite these, you know, Loyola who plays schools with northern and southern parts of California and who has an attendance of 10,000 visitors to march into our neighborhood and vandalize our cars, lawns, take up our parking spaces, and invade, invade us with thousands of cars. Now, if there is no police protection, you know, this is going to continue to be exactly what we've had before. And I know this is an old story, you haven't seen me here for several months, but it is football season, and I am back, and, you know, we are going to come back with more people about this issue. Now, with this act, they have proven, this Glendale Unified School District has proven that not only they don't care about the students, but that they could care less about our neighborhood, our city residents, and our right to a peaceful life. Loyola will be playing six games with non-Glendale schools, and the district will be making money at our expense. As one of its representatives expressed at the Parking and Commission meeting a month ago, we cannot tell them what to do in their own schools. I ask you, our council members, are they above the law? And does the city ordinances not apply to them? If so, the city has a responsibility to improve our neglected neighborhood. There are several things that I like to point out here, how you can improve our neighborhood. One of them is, on the game night, the city must provide protection to monitor traffic and enforce parking signs. Please do not sleep and listen to me carefully because this is an issue very important. We've sat here for a long time listening to people who, because they cannot have this mountain view, they're here for three hours taking up, taking up our time, and I'm, I'm really upset that you guys have decided to have the oral communication after, you know, at this, at this time, when most of you are very tired. The bleachers demand the school to put shades on the stadium lights. There have been several accidents due to visibility. Every time I drive home, turning right on East Harvard from Maynard, the glaring lights obstruct my view, and I have had several close calls with oncoming traffic from campus. My time is coming up. The bleachers next to our buildings, people run until 10 o'clock at night, and I would like the city to begin to plan on constructing a combination of brick and transparent wall that is as high as the bleachers. There are many, many states that have these walls, they have, in addition to the brick wall, they have some type of transparent glass, which is, which gives them a much higher height, and I think this would be a really good way of bringing some improvement to our community and isolating our school, our neighborhood from the school that does not want to abide by any city ordinances, and noise is one of them. I have measured the noise...
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude, Ms. Lalayian.
Thank you. The...
That means within just a couple of seconds here.
Couple of seconds. Okay, this is the wall I'm talking about. This is a combination of a brick wall and a transparent wall, which can go very high. And this, I saw this on the freeway going down to Dana Point this summer, and it's fantastic, and it does not, you know, it's not ugly like the other walls. And I just want to mention that it says, "Federal guidelines allow the seat through sound walls for churches, historic locations, parks, hospitals, and schools." And I don't know any school in California or in the whole United States that has a school with bleachers so close to residential. I, I would challenge you to, for you guys to find it...
I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like some comments afterwards, if you can...
And also, please feel free to come back. Sergio Lalayian.
First of all, I want to thank for the opportunity. I'm glad that, I live in this city since 1983. I moved here, 1983.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
My first name is Sergio, my last name is Lalayian. I live just behind Glendale High School, corner of East Harvard and Campus Area. I am not going to go in detail because most of the things Linda have been coming here and talking about, all these problems we have. But several things I want to just bring to your attention as a highlight. Number one thing that I am very concerned about, and Linda is very concerned, and our neighbors are very concerned about, first of all, we are not attacking Glendale High School students. I want everybody to know that high school students, they do their, they play their games, and they've been our neighbors, and we are very supportive of our high school students. What is becoming out of hand and out of control is excessive usage of this field by outsiders, people that are not part of Glendale High School. 11 o'clock at night, 12 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock in the morning, we have been bothered, disturbed by people who are about 35, 40 years old, 55 years old, 60 years old, and people don't belong there. They're not Glendale High School students. There are people that are using that area for doing some kind of exercise, some kind of walking on the bleachers, and four girls together decided at 11 o'clock at night, come and jump up and down on bleachers. And these are the situations that are really, really affecting our peace in the neighborhood. And especially now that after turf has become remodeled, or they use another material, they spent like $1 million, redesigned the turf, now the school is renting this to other entities. I am not against Glendale High School students playing football game with six times or seven times a year, or as they wish to, but I'm absolutely against, for example, San Diego High School playing Loyola in my neighborhood with 10,000 attended. This is ridiculous, and this is insane, especially with the streets that we can't even park our cars. How many times, you dear council members, I've sat here a long time listening to our complaints about parking? It was just about a month ago that we came here after 60, 50 meetings to decide to turn the, or two hours to one hour zone, isn't it? Everybody was here. We were going through a lot of problems with this situation. And now, we have a stadium that his light is on until 11 o'clock at night, and every corner have like 500 light bulbs coming to my apartment, coming to my living room, coming to my privacy, when I want to make a right turn to park my car, I can't. This looks like the movie Closing Counter of the Third Kind. I mean, my God, I mean, how can I enter to this place? And now, they're starting renting this place to other people, and my main concern is this. When Glendale Unified School District decides to do this kind of gaming, who they counsel? Aren't we like worthy of at least being their meeting? You're having 10,000 people right next to my nose, and you don't have, sort of like, we don't have that right to be part of the decision-making, or the neighbors that live there? Okay, we, I'm going to invite 10,000 people, do we have anything to say about it? No. And we have to be continually, constantly harassed. Have you, how do you think about 7 o'clock in the morning, having 55 people in the field screaming at each other, profanity, and a referee with that thing in his hand, every two seconds, "Wheee, whee, whee!" 7 o'clock in the morning? Give me a break. This is Sunday, we have to sleep, we have... I am a teacher, I teach in two schools. I don't have Saturday, I don't have Sunday, I don't have Friday, and I don't have any weeks of the day. If you come to my neighborhood right now, kids are playing until 11 o'clock, and lights are on. Okay, I understand. Kids need to practice, fine. What about Friday? What about Saturday? What about Sunday? I mean, enough is enough. And now, we're going to sit down and watch like other schools from another area come and play? This is a neighborhood that is divided between a high school and some decent neighbors. We are human beings, we want to live next to each other, we both want to enjoy our privacy, but why is it that this school is keep pushing it, and pushing it, and pushing it, and nobody stops people, saying, "Okay, enough is enough." And I have not been, to be honest with you, been, have a good sleep. Every day at 7 o'clock, I have to wake up, go to downtown, go to Lacrosse Center, go to the Valley, and teaching three schools, and until 1 o'clock in the morning, I have people jumping up and down, dear mayor and council members, on, on the bleachers, five foot from my bedroom, and nobody seems like taking that thing in consideration. And how many times we should come here and say, "Please talk to Glendale Unified School District, put some restriction." They never close their door, they never lock their gates, 24 hours a day, that gate is open, and we get all kind of people coming there. That's our concern. I am not complaining about high school students. Please don't get the soccer moms here next, next, next meeting. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lalayian. Our next speaker is Rita Unikyan, followed by Krikor Kazanjian.
Hi, how are you? Dear Mayor, Mayor, council members, city staff, and community members, my name is Rita Unikyan. I have been a resident of Glendale since 1989. I have been coming to the Glendale City Council meetings since April 2008 to ask you to consider placing on the agenda the typics of rent control. I am a single parent who has been involved in my child's life and an active PTA member. I am here not only for myself, but also for all low-income residents of Glendale, including senior citizens and those on SSI who can no longer make ends meet, ends meet. I'm come here every week and ask you to bring the typic, typic...
Topic.
Topic of rent control up for this, this discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. Thank you very much, God bless you. Understand that this is not an important issue to you, but it is to your voters. You pretend to listen to me for the five minutes that I speak, but never take any action on what I am proposing. You forget about what I ask for the next six days, and see me again on the following I really don't understand how you can take other cities, no, citizens require...
Wait.
Recommend, recommendation on absentee, absent, absent, excuse me, absentee, absent ballot measure in a...
Ballot measure.
Funds, finance, finance reform, banquet halls, or the smoking, but when I, it comes to rent control, you don't even want to bring it up for discussion, discussion. In a stand, in a stand, you tell me to get 13,000 signatures to place this issue for rent control on the ballot. I ask you, as you, as my council members, to please hold a community meeting to discuss the option of employ, employ, employmenting?
Regimenting.
Yeah, thank you. Rent control in Glendale. Thank you for your time and concentration. Thank you very much today, help me, God bless.
You're very welcome. Ms. Unikyan, please don't leave, because I have a few questions for you afterward. Krikor Kazanjian.
Good evening. My name is Krikor Kazanjian. I live 443 West Wilson Avenue, 91203. This is happening a few times already, and last month, two, two weeks, right after each other, they didn't, they didn't pick up the garbage, and third week, I got a yellow ticket on it as an overflow, and I cover it up. And number two, the street cleaning, they're cleaning once in a month, then me and my wife, we have to get the broom and cleaning, if it's possible, do it two times a month. And number three is the, I have a big tree in front of the house near the side... And number three is the, I have a big tree front of the house near the sidewalk. It was break before the sidewalk and going higher and up is still running again and my front lawn is going way, way up right now and root seems like it's reaching to the house. Possible that tree, remove it?
Well, let me suggest this, Mr. Kazanjian, are you, are you completed?
Yes.
Let me ask if we can get the address, your address so we can have the staff get together with you, see if we can't find out what's going on.
Four, four, three, West Wilson.
Mr. Kazanjian, we'll make sure we have that and we'll get it to Mr. Zern and, and we'll, we'll get to the bottom of it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, let me go to my colleagues, see if there are any comments related to, we're not ready for the new business yet.
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure because you have them out, ready to go. Did you have any comments, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, one, when I bought my car eight years ago, I made the dealer disconnect that beep beep because I did not care for it going off all the time. And to do it, I'm guessing that would be the state, would be the jurisdiction, federal government probably wouldn't, but could the state require, I mean, if we can acquire, if the state can require different types of fuel for cars in California, I presume they could also consider legislating that if they didn't want beep beeps.
They could. State already legislates in the area of car alarms. If an alarm goes off continuously for over a certain period of time, and I forget what the vehicle code provides, you're allowed to actually tow the vehicle away. This isn't that circumstance, this is the whole issue of those audible, you can call keyless remotes. We possibly could legislate in that area, it's a question of whether or not we're preempted. We have to take a look at that.
Yeah.
If the council were interested, we'd have to take a look at it.
No, I just brought up because I disconnected mine before I even drove it out of the lot. Didn't want it. The other thing, I can't think that there's a separation between the school district and the city of Glendale, that we cannot interfere within their premises, they have chain link fences, we can't stop that. Soon as you get off that sidewalk on the, the school district property, forget it. Environmental documents, forget it. They're autonomous. And what's happening on the bleachers or whatever is their function to handle. We have received a lot of emails, I'm sure we've all received them, but the school district has been sent and they have to handle it. As far as Loyola Marymount or Loyola High School, gosh, they must have been playing there for decades, decades. I'm never going to see a Glendale High Loyola game, has to be at least thirty years back now. And the reason I remember it, John Wayne was sitting in the front row watching his son play for Loyola and he didn't have his toupee on. That's why I remember it. I didn't know he was bald until I saw him sitting down there, they said, that's John Wayne. Now, that was twenty, thirty years ago. Now, they may be playing six games this year as USC football fanatic. Every year SC may have four games at home, five games at home, six games at home. They don't control the schedule. Every year it varies. This year Loyola happens to have six, next year it could be five or four. They don't control the schedule either. It's the Southern California Association of Interscholastical, yeah, whatever. They, they set the schedules and Loyola has used it for decades. It's not like they just came along. Glendale High, when I went there in the fifties, was just like it is now, except they replaced the eastern bleachers that were, I think wooden and broken down with the ones that are there now. That whole area, on camps, everything, it hasn't changed in fifty, sixty years. It's been that way. It's, it's like when you, you wanna go buy a house next to the airport and then you say, well, I don't like those planes going over, close the airport down. It doesn't happen that way. You buy next to a school, you buy next to an airport, you buy next to a park, you buy into what's there.
Excuse me, wait, 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 we're not, no, sir, we're not gonna do that. No, no. We're, we're not gonna have a back and forth from the audience like that.
You go there, the land values are cheaper in those areas, you get what you pay for.
Ma'am, ma'am, you're not going to do that, period. Ma'am, you're either going to stop talking, please remove her. Mr. Weaver, you may continue your comments.
Well, I'm not gonna sit here and get insulted. I'm telling the truth and you don't like the truth, that's your problem, not mine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let me just say something here. I know you're, you had a lot of passion on the issue and I know you live with this and you've been here before and some of us, myself included, have been very sympathetic to what your comments are. But I can't make an exception for you that I don't make for everybody else, which is catcalling and yelling from the, from the seats out there. You ask for comments from this council specifically on your issue. You may hear some you like and some you don't like and, and I agree with you, you can disagree on those, but what you can't do is yell from the audience up here. So I invite you to, I invite you to come back. It's all right. It's, it's, you don't need to apologize, but it's okay. See, we're, we're doing it again.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, it's, it's a, the mayor has the authority to warn the individual that she's being disruptive, in this case it's, I'm saying she because it's female, that, that she's being disruptive, interfering with the orderly business of the council and that if she doesn't stop, you'll give her warning and she'll be removed. And that happens within a series of seconds. So certainly you've cautioned this individual already, if she continues to do that, she could be removed and if she refuses to go of her own accord, the sergeant-at-arms could forcibly remove her.
All right.
And escort her out of the chambers.
And in this case, I think we, we have an understanding. Just leave it as it is. Uh, you know, there have to be some basic guidelines here. Those basic guidelines are you speak, we don't interrupt you, we speak, you don't interrupt us, we try to make this work. We try to get to a conclusion that'll hopefully resolve some of these issues. All right, Mr. Quintero.
Mr. McFaul, we can get the Glendale PD to enforce all the parking ordinance, ordinances during this football season, right?
Yes, and I noted her request on that, we'll definitely follow through with her.
Glendale PD to, I mean, especially if the watch commander is given a, an advance notice as to the date and time of the football games so this neighborhood can get some peace. Unfortunately, in terms of what the city, or rather what the Glendale School District does with the, with that football field, there is nothing we can do about it. We can enforce the parking ordinance and parking ordinances and that's about it. And I can't believe I'm hearing once again that they're leaving the gate open, et cetera, et cetera. We went down that road a couple of years ago. That's the way it is. But anyway, I do want the police to be there to enforce parking and speeding and anything else on the game nights.
We will, all the areas that would, are within our jurisdiction, last year the police department was there regularly and we'll make sure that they continue that and any citations, any enforcement we can do, we will do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quintero, Mr. Najarian.
Well, first off, I'd like to tell Mr. and Mrs. Lallion that the, that when I got your email indicating the six games of Loyola, it came as a shock to me. But I can assure you that the school board has not communicated any of that to me. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if it's come to you or Mr. Quintero or Mr. Weaver. Uh, I think your points, uh, your, your points are valid and I disagree with Mr. Weaver about, about a condition having existed before residences come in. Uh, you know, and there's the common law case, you learn in law school, you could have a, the most obnoxious factory twenty miles away from the nearest residence and should residences then begin to move around that, they're certainly permitted to enforce the nuisance laws. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Howard.
I'm not gonna correct you because you're, you're correct with one little twist and that is you're dealing with a school district which has certain rights, both under the California Constitution and under California state law. But certainly I don't believe that, so you've got that trade-off of whether or not it is a nuisance because they're conducting activities consistent with their educational mission.
I thought it was a pig farm.
I think that was close to the example. I mean, certainly they, they should be allowed to have, to pursue their educational objectives within reason, football games, soccer games, but, and I haven't been to their neighborhood at that time of night, but clearly I think if they're talking about one o'clock or as early as seven o'clock in the morning on a Sunday, do none of the typical nuisance laws involving noise, lighting, pounding, apply to the school district?
Some might. Lighting I know doesn't. For example, there is a court of appeals opinion right on point where actually a neighborhood did try to challenge a school district which, which essentially erected brand-new, high-powered lights, claiming that they were gonna be a nuisance in the neighborhood and the court found that they were essentially preempted by the fact that athletics and the lights that were involved and that were part of their educational mission, which couldn't be, which essentially were regulated by the school district. School district, by the way, is not exempt from environmental laws, they have to follow SEQA just like we do.
Vibrations and...
Well, again, because of the unique nature of a school district, just like a governmental agency, there are certain limitations on the ability to apply nuisance laws to that. If the council wants us to look into those nuances, there's a case out of Pasadena, for example, where a, I believe it was the college up there that tried to utilize their exemption from municipal laws relating to swap meets, claiming that's part of their education mission. They lost that case.
You know, I don't wanna get into a fight with the school district again, um, but, uh, you know, I would encourage you to go to them, I don't know if you have or have not, go to their board meetings and express your concerns. Uh, you know, we do have to make, we are in many ways cooperating with the school district, uh, I think more than they would like to recognize. Um, but let me not digress, that we, we just can't hit them with a, you know, a stop and desist, a cease and desist order. Uh, it creates all sorts of problems between us, we need to work with them. Uh, I'm hoping that there's some solution to this. I mean, we hear your complaints. Um, I don't know if there's any, anything we can do to move forward, to maybe have the city manager meet with the... Yep. Right, just to express the, to reiterate your concerns that we're hearing and that in fact you are putting us residents, uh, you know, our job is to protect your quality of life. Uh, we are being put in a rather tenuous situation with your request vis-a-vis the school district. So that's, that's as much as I'd like to say on that issue at this point. Um, my next question is for Ms. Unikian. Would you mind coming forward? I wanna ask you some questions. If you don't wanna answer them, please don't answer. You're not, I'm not here to interrogate you, but you've been here before us many, many times. Um, and you're asking for rent control. May I ask you how much your rent is?
Right now?
Right now.
One thousand four hundred.
And how many bedrooms do you live in?
Two.
Two bedrooms. What was the last increase that you had?
Uh, when, uh, in the laundry inside building, one thousand two hundred.
It was one thousand two hundred and then it went up two hundred dollars?
Two hundred.
And does that include parking?
Parking, two parking, yes.
When was your building built?
Huh?
What year was your building built? Do you know? Is it a newer building or an older building?
No, new.
It's a newer building.
This is new building.
And, um, your family lives with you? You have children?
I have a, actually my ma and me and my daughter.
And are you able to work?
Not yet, but I'm, because Mr. Mayor and Draymond and everybody, already I'm twelve years I'm volunteer, I'm help at school, but when, uh, last time, my principal, Mrs. Camfield, is told me that the school is very proud of with me for, I'm very honest people and help at for lots of student and teacher and everybody for volunteer, that's why it said you're very honest woman, I'm help you and work.
I can tell...
Just one year I'm work two, three days for day, but when is my new principal is gone, another principal when is come, he said, I don't know who are you.
I understand.
Then I don't like you work this school, that's why.
I mean, I can tell you're a very hard worker. I don't think anyone will object to that. You're very persistent and despite not being completely fluent in English, you always come to try and make your point.
But, Mr. Aranidarian...
But my question is, my question is, what, and when you talk about rent control, is there, I mean, what would you want, if I had the power, me, today, to change your rent, what is it you would want me to change it to?
Change?
Yeah, how much?
I like it for people is same is their last three day, three years, one thousand two hundred is very good. One thousand three hundred is very good, but lot of people, I'm not just think it for me, I'm think it for all resident in Glendale.
I understand, but I'm, I'm talking about...
Because I'm very care everybody, but I'm very care my council members, I'm very careful I'm live this country because when I know it for you have any wrong, you told your council members, you, council members is think it for what's happened in the outside in the, this meeting.
I understand. Does your landlord take care of your building and your unit?
Yeah, but landlord, I know it, some landlord is the best. I'm not for wrong told you. Some landlord is the best and very work for the city and people and very good people.
And let me tell you...
But some, some landlord, because it's lot of for the building and then is not help it for city and not think it for this community is the Glendale is the best...
We have to cut it short, we have to cut it short. But let me tell you that what I'm thinking is that that is the problem, that there are some good landlords that keep the rents at reasonable amounts, that don't raise it out of reach.
Yes, yes.
But there are some bad landlords too that don't maintain the property, that raise it as much as they can get and don't care if you're in there.
But, Mr., uh, I know you...
Thank you, I'm learning about this and I'm glad I had this chance to talk with you.
I know, I know, I know, I know, thank you very much, you told me. But, Mr. Draymond, I know you first for council members, I know, I'm, I'm not, excuse me, I'm not told for you boss, but I know who are you. First you are you and who these people for their work for the city. But remember, I'm think it for the, my city, my city is very help at for low-income people. Why? Because when is somebody is called for the, I'm said, is that I'm low-income, then is somebody is...
Thank you, Ms. Unikian, I just had a few questions, so I can't give you a whole other time, another five minutes, but thank you for answering my questions. It's something that we're all concerned about and we want to resolve this problem.
But, Mr. Aranidarian, I know who...
Ms. Unikian, I'm gonna ask you to, to take a seat for a minute because I'm gonna have a couple of questions for you also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Only as a reminder, as the city council requests, we do have an agenda report coming back on rent mediation on October twenty eighth.
Right, which is one of the things I was going to get to, but, um, and that was at Councilmember Najarian's request. So that, that should be helpful. Um, Mr. Najarian, didn't wanna...
I'm, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I perhaps went over my...
No, I mean, did you have any other...
No, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Couple of things. Um, one is, Ms. Lallion, um, what I'd like to do here is something a little different than what's been suggested. Um, it was Councilmember Najarian got pretty close to where I was headed. Um, I think it's, it's fine to ask Dr. Escalante to come in and speak with Mr. McFaul or whomever, but I'd like to do something a little different than that. I don't wanna put Dr. Escalante on the, on the spot or anything like that. However, um, I, I think if there is a solution to be reached, if we're gonna ever be able to do that, um, clearly the schools and the city have to be involved together. Um, to me, it's just an evasion of the topic to say, the schools are autonomous, they can do whatever they want and leave the, and we can't do anything and so the, the residents are just sort of left in limbo in between, hoping that one party or the other is gonna be, uh, well, as they would view it, cooperative. I mean, clearly, uh, they are not completely autonomous and the city attorney has pointed that out and even though maybe some aspects of the nuisance laws, we have no say over, clearly some we do. I mean, if they were erecting a rocket launcher back there, which they're not, but if they were, certainly we'd have something to say about it or someone would if they decided to, you know, the football stadium would be better used as a, as a landfill or whatever.
Science project.
Or a science project, we'd have something we could say about it. So what I'm gonna suggest is this, uh, let's, let's invite Dr. Escalante. decided to, you know, the football stadium would be better used as a, uh, as a landfill or whatever.
Science project.
Or a science project, we'd have something we could say about it. So what I'm gonna suggest is this, uh, let's, let's invite Dr. Escalante and the, uh, and the current president of the school board, uh, Ms. Wagner, to sit down with the city manager, and, uh, and I'd be happy to participate in that meeting, and with you. And if you'd like to bring, uh, uh, another person along as well. And let's have a conversation where we're not limited by five-minute increments or three-minute increments, we can actually have a dialogue. And that way, if our passions and emotions get carried away, you can just reach across the table and slug me, and, uh, and, uh, we can do it that way, if you would be willing to do that. Let's invite, thank you, let's invite, uh, Dr. Escalante and Jolene Wagner to meet with me, and, um, and, uh, Mr. Starbird and the Lallions, and see if we can't answer some questions, number one, and two, see if there's anything that we can do, because I just, this isn't fair to the school district, it isn't fair to the city, and it isn't fair to the residents, that we just keep going round and round and round and round. So let's, let's do that, and let's do it as soon as we can possibly arrange it. Um, second, um, I wanna come back to Ms. Yunikian. Um, for one thing, the comment was made in your, uh, in your comments, uh, that we are ignoring, in essence, we're ignoring you and your requests and are simply telling you, "Go out and get thirteen thousand signatures." That isn't true, and I, that is not true. And the fact of the matter is, it's exactly the opposite way around. You came to this council claiming you were going to go out and get thirteen thousand signatures, and asked me directly, the city clerk, uh, several people in the, in the management services office, Councilmember Najarian and others, how you go about placing this issue on the ballot. It's not that you came here asking for us to do it, and we ignored you and said, "Go put it on the ballot," it was the other way around. I actually explained to you what my position was on it when you asked, and at your request, I asked every council member up here if they wanted, uh, to put that on the, on the agenda, that is, rent control as an issue to debate and to vote on, and to get public input on, and to a person, they all said, "No," they did not want to do that at that time. Um, so I just wanted to clear that issue up. I have, I have a couple of questions for you, if you wouldn't mind, please. And I'll just, uh, parrot what, uh, Councilmember Najarian said, and don't feel compelled to answer any of the questions, but they are questions I have in my mind. You are doing very, very well with your English, by the way, and I understand you...
I'm very good, understand.
I understand you perfectly, I think all my colleagues do as well, but I do have a question for you. And I don't mean anything by it, but I am intensely curious. Uh, the materials that you are reading, that you're having trouble with, who's writing those?
Writing?
Yes. The materials that you read each week, that you have trouble reading.
Oh, this, oh, this paper?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm, uh, bring, because my Persian is very good, I'm Armenian, I'm, uh, poet is here, paper, and then, uh, my friend or somebody is there help me, because my, uh...
But could I ask you a que, no, I understand why, but could I ask you, whoever writes it, why don't you ask them to come and read, and yes, and read their own material to us? Because I think part of it is, you're having trouble reading someone else's words that they're putting in there, and part of what they wrote for you to say was factually, completely incorrect, that we dismissed you and said, "Go out and just, uh, collect signatures." See, that was entirely factually wrong.
No.
And so my point is, whoever is writing this wasn't apparently aware of the conversation you had with Councilmember Najarian, or with me, or with Mr. Kasakian, or Mr. Yusefian, or Anheed in our office. So I'm suggesting that you might wanna bring somebody to read those words, and then we'd know why they misunderstand. The other question is, um, have you spoken to Mr. Weaver, and Mr. Quintero, and me, and Mr. Najarian, and Mr. Yusefian?
I'm just...
Individually? Let me just finish my question.
Separate, separate.
Individually about urging them to place, uh, rent control on, on the agenda?
Um, uh, remember, first, I'm talk to you.
Mm-hmm.
I swear to God, I'm not talk to Aran Najarian, or I'm not talk to that Mr...
Oh, you talk to me.
Long time.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Oh, I'm not, first time, little bit you told me...
Told you how to do it.
No, you like it, I told you, everybody?
I told you.
First time, no.
Let, let, let her...
First time I said, every Armenian people is like you, but you said, "Armenian people is not like me," first for office. Then I said, "Mr. Weaver, I'm speak, uh, I'm not speak English, you like it, rent control?" You said, "I don't like it," but Mr. Fentero is said, "It's not bad, you try it, but I don't like it," or when you put ballot, but I, everybody, I, sorry, I'm not good to speak, but you very honest with me. Why? Because when you don't like it, rent control, but you told me what my right, that's why I'm very happiest. Why? Because maybe you don't like it, rent controlling Glendale, but you, you have a work, and you understand rule, and you understand for legal which, uh, right for the resident. You told me, Rita, you find it for the petition onto the ballot, then you, or, the city clerk is very help me, I'm very proud of, I'm very proud of. And Mr. Ardas Katsakian, or anybody, but remember, uh, why I'm here all the time, because I know it, this is very hard for me, but I swear to God, I have a lot of signature...
Let me, uh, let me, let me just bring it back to one last, one suggestion for you. Uh, you're, I agree with Councilmember Najarian, you are a very sincere person, I know that having spoken to you...
Yeah, Mr. Aran Najarian, you told me.
Several times correctly, uh, over, over, I don't know, maybe six or eight months, um, and, um, and I don't doubt that at all, and I know why you want to do this. My suggestion to you is, that whoever is writing your material for you might want to consider writing material that is easier for you to say, uh, when they're putting in words that are very difficult to pronounce, very difficult for you to speak, they're not helping you, or the point of view, or maybe they should come and read their own material. Um, I, I will, uh, tell you what, I'm going to ask my colleagues again next week, when they're all here, to see whether or not there's any change in that, and we'll, we'll see whether there's any interest in, uh, in placing this on the agenda. I've told you personally, I've made it very clear, I'm on the record.
Thank you very much, God bless.
I am not interested in approaching rent control, so, um, in any case, but we, we can check that again for you.
But, Mr. Draymond...
Ma'am, I'm gonna stop right there because of time.
Okay.
Because of time, but do you come back next week? I'm sure you will anyway.
But thank you very much, God bless you, I'm proud of it.
You're very, very welcome.
And everybody.
Okay. Um, Mr. Weaver?
I don't know who put her up to it, but she just stood here and lied. A secretary out there was there when we talked, and I did not say the thing she said. She outright lied, and I don't know who put her up to it. And I'm very offended you would stand here and lie.
Okay.
She misspoke.
Um, all right. We have, uh, Mr. Kasakian, we have, uh, new business?
Yes.
We have two, two motions?
Yes.
On Mr. Weaver and Mr. Najarian.
I'd like to move to the council, the city of Glendale hereby authorize the city attorney to institute legal proceedings against Wigan Agasarian and those one through twenty, in order to recover medical and other expenses it has paid for the benefit of an employee under the Workers' Compensation Insurance and Safety Act. Set proceedings are appropriate under Labor Code Section 3852 and 3853, which authorize employers to pursue recovery of workers' compensation benefits paid to an employee who was injured on the job.
Second.
Any, uh, comment or debate? No, uh, Mr. Kasakian, please.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Mayor Draymond?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council of the city of Glendale hereby authorize the city attorney to institute legal proceedings against Mohammed A. Sadiqi and those one through twenty, in order to recover medical and other expenses it has paid for the benefit of an employee under the Workers' Compensation Insurance and Safety Act. Said proceedings are appropriate under Labor Code Section 3852 and 3853, which authorize employers to pursue recovery of workers' compensation benefits paid to an employee who was injured on the job.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comment from the council or input, debate? No. Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, we adjourn.